Park is that it's kind of on the south side of the city. It's not near all the activity and everything. And so being able to have this opportunity to put this here and share this space, this redeveloped, re-envisioned space with all these other entities that'll provide community services, I think is really just a milestone for our city, really, to be able to have all of this come together. And I think people will look back in the future and once it's all done, it'll really be something. So, thanks.
Appreciate the creativity with the Norman forward funding that we found. Just a reminder, it started with a zero budget.
Yes.
And CARES Act funding and us having the will to move it forward, to add this gym to our community. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, just you made me think of something, Councilmember Holman, of really when the origin of this project began with a bond issue in 2008, when the voters of Norman approved the concept of a senior center, but it was to be located in what's now the old library building that's being developed as our new municipal building. And city offices were always planned as part of that space at the time. Because the issue of moving the library did not pass at the time, even though the senior center passed, it just came to a total standstill. But there was, you know, there were designs at the time and anyway, we were just kind of stuck. And the point I'm trying to make is the power of residents advocating to our city and to our elected officials on rethinking what a 21st century senior wellness center should look like. And because we had those obstacles, we did have the opportunity to spend all these years really moving the concept forward to something that I think no one really envisioned in 2008. And so the result of all of those efforts from our senior community in Norman have really gotten us to where we are today. So it's been a long journey, but I think we have a better project in the end.
City Manager Pyle?
Mr. Olson, you may have been having the conversation with committees and staff. The existing senior center, do we have recommendations for how that space will be reutilized once we're able to occupy this wonderful new space?
We don't have a clear path of what that's going to be as of yet. The, I think that sometime in this next year, we'll open that up for proposals and we would love to see what comes in. We've had contact from other nonprofits. We've had arts groups that are interested in basing out there. We've even had short conversations with aging services because they run the kitchen in the bottom of it, of maybe occupying the whole building as an office building. We don't, it's not really clear on what that is, but that building's historic. It's an important piece of Norman and we want to, I don't know what is going to be happening for that, but I envision it to be some kind of community space that we share with a nonprofit or arts community or something like that.
Councilmember Foreman?
What is, what do you have in mind for the possible future expansion on here? What would that be?
That would be the, this gray area, which is not, it's really gray on the computer, not so gray on there, but that would be the gym area that we're kind of thinking of. Right now, as it's planned, that will be free outdoor pickleball courts. If we do find funding sometime in the future, that will be indoor space, a full court basketball gym with pickleball courts overlaid onto that basketball gym. And even if we put these outdoor pickleball courts in, it's just a, you know, and we come back in a couple of years and have to knock that out, that's not, it's not a very high loss on that. That's just kind of pennies on the dollar to, you know, put something in that we want long-term out there. So we're just trying to make sure we get as much recreational space as we can for our active adult seniors.
What about elders?
How about wisdom wellness?
How about Grateful Dead?
All right. Councilmember Hall?
So just want to hop on City Manager Pyle's comment about the building and assuming at this point that the city of Norman will be retaining control of that building. And like you said, there are lots of possibilities. I've had so many different groups reach out to ask about the future of that building. So that'll be exciting to consider how we reuse that space. But I'm reminded of one of our very early conversations when I first joined city council and said to you that there were two buildings in Norman that I felt were at risk in downtown Norman. And one was the senior center building and the other one is the old post office. So the fact that we're still moving forward and we're committed to preserving the exterior of that historic building is really pleasing and I think important to the community to be able to preserve that building. And interestingly enough, a lot of people think that's a Carnegie library. And it isn't, but it was, the architectural style is similar to Carnegie libraries that were built across the United States. And of course, it was the original public library for Norman. So just interesting little historical tidbits and the importance of preserving those buildings that tell our story.
All right. Any other comments?
Are there public comments?
Not in council conferences. I have one quick question about 718.
Yes.
So you mentioned getting to escrow in February. So will we be hanging out with that space and unable to use it until February?
Well, I think it's being used currently by the hospital for some activities, but we would receive that land in the land transfer and we anticipate that being completed and then we would become the owners.
And do you plan to utilize that site up until February?
Not currently, no.
Okay.
Our goal is to be vacated by the end of this year, this calendar year.
Okay, so not a big window there. Okay, all right, that's all I needed. Well, thank you very much for your time. Thank you for the update. And I will second Councilmember Hall's thanks to all of our ad hoc committees that are doing this from the love of their hearts for free. Okay, we will start our council meeting at 6:30. It is now 5:55.
No, no. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of October 26, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley, Absentate Councilmember Schuler.
Here.
Councilmember Lynn.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello.
Here.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Item one is consideration of the minutes as follows: City Council Minutes of October 12, 2021, Norman Utilities Authority Minutes of October 12, 2021, Norman Municipal Authority Minutes of October 12, 2021, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of October 12, 2021. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 22, Proclamation 2122-9, a proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of October 2021 as code compliance month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of October 2021 as code compliance month in the city of Norman. Whereas code compliance officers provide for safety and welfare of the citizens in the city of Norman through the enforcement of local codes or ordinances facing various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health, and life safety. And whereas code compliance officers often have a challenging and demanding role and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving living and working conditions for residences and businesses. And whereas the City of Norman code compliance officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and neucis codes and ordinances. And whereas there is a total of 90 years' worth of code experience in the City of Norman Code Compliance Division, and four of the city's officers have been named Oklahoma Code Enforcement Officer of the Year: Janita Hatley, 2004, Kelvin Winter, 2006, Barbara Burlingame, 2008, and Joe Shire, 2014. And whereas the City of Norman code compliance officers have been very active in the Oklahoma Code Enforcement Association and have held numerous offices in the state organization since its inception in 1994. And whereas code enforcement officers are called upon to provide quality customer service and excellence to the residents and businesses. And now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby declare the month of October 2021 as code compliance month in the city of Norman. I'd like to recognize Mr. Kelvin Winter, code compliance supervisor, to accept the proclamation and thank the council. Come on down. Thank you so much. Item three, Proclamation 2122-10, a proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Norman. Whereas in 1990, President George H.W. Bush approved a joint resolution designating the month of November National American Indian Heritage Month in recognition and honor of the 574 American Indian tribal nations and their contributions to the identity and development of the United States. And whereas this designated month is a time to acknowledge, celebrate, and honor the rich diverse histories, cultures, traditions, presence, and contributions of the state of Oklahoma's 39 federally recognized tribes and their tribal citizens. And whereas the City of Norman is a supportive neighbor to the Absenteishawnee, Citizen Potawatomi Nation, Kickapoo, Chickasaw, Sacanfox, and Seminole Tribes nations. And whereas this month is a time to celebrate rich and diverse cultures, traditions, histories, and acknowledge the contributions of native people. And whereas the City of Norman has one of the largest proportional populations of tribal citizens of all cities in Oklahoma. And whereas the City of Norman, its citizens and visitors, have unique and special circumstances and opportunities for learning about Oklahoma American Indian presence with its wealth of resources through the neighboring aforementioned tribal nations: the University of Oklahoma's Native American Studies Department, Native Nation Center, Sam Noble Museum of Natural History, American Indian Institute, and the OU American Indian Programs and Services, among others. And whereas it is the City of Norman's commitment to build an inclusive community. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating in the spirit of inclusiveness and respect. I'd now like to recognize Bill Hamm, trustee of the Oscar Jacobson Foundation, which operates the Jacobson House Native Arts Center, to accept the proclamation.
Oi, zani wabihoyim pi combra. Bill Hamm jajay abri. Wajajay jalagi chikasha minksheshki. Apa de iye deke ada u dawdli. Gado Jacobson House wipon de combra. Hello everyone, I'd like to address you all as relatives and as friends. My name is Bill Hamm. I'm an Osage and Cherokee citizen, and I'm also of Chickasaw descent. I serve on the Oscar Jacobson Foundation as a trustee, and we operate the Jacobson House Native Arts Center here in Norman. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the foundation and also on behalf of Norman. honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the foundation and also on behalf of Norman's Native American citizens, and I'm glad the city has made such a meaningful designation to recognize the history, cultures, perspectives, and unique contributions of indigenous peoples. These values are also reflected in our mission at the Oscar Jacobson Foundation, and I'm grateful to have just a moment to tell you about our work. We operate out of the Jacobson House on the corner of Boyd and Chautauqua, the former house of Dr. Oscar Jacobson, a Swedish-American artist and the first director of OU School of Art. By using his house as a vehicle for community building for Native American students and for promoting Native American artists, we honor not only his legacy but the legacy of the Kiowa Six. And while I could talk for hours about the accomplishments of the Kiowa Six, for the sake of brevity, I will say this. In the 1920s, six talented Kiowa students at the University of Oklahoma sparked a renaissance of Native American traditional painting. They would earn international acclaim, bring about the era of flat style Southern Plains painting, and they would serve as an inspiration for many Native artists in the generations to come. Today, the Jacobson House serves as a space for Native students, artists, and the community at large to come together to celebrate Native culture through art exhibitions and cultural activities. In the 35 years since our inception as a 501(c)(3), we have hosted countless language and cultural classes, live performances, and student activities. And while COVID has presented challenges for us, just in the last year, we've been able to host Plains Indian Sign Language classes, original poetry and short story readings, an Inishanabe art exhibit, live performances by various artists, and even a Native youth art show, which we hope to continue annually to continue to encourage the next generations of Native artists to pursue their dreams. Again, thank you for taking the time to recognize Native culture and perspectives, and thank you.
Thank you. Item four, a proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of October 2021 as LGBTQ History Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes via vote of seven to one, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of October 2021 as LGBTQ History Month in the city of Norman, whereas the City of Norman is proud to show support of the advancements made in our community and continuous efforts to support the LGBTQ+ community this month and throughout; and whereas LGBTQ History Month was initiated in 1994 by a Missouri high school teacher who believed the month should be dedicated to the celebration and teaching of gay and lesbian history; and whereas the month of October includes October 11th, Coming Out Day, which was first celebrated in 1988, encounters homophobia by eliminating an atmosphere of silence and ignorance; and whereas the City of Norman is committed to advance and improve through the modernization of ordinance and policies to prohibit discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, and marital status as same-sex couples in housing, employment, and public accommodations; and whereas in June 2021, Norman became the first city in the state of Oklahoma to pass an ordinance banning conversion therapy. A practice research shows increases suicide risk in young people subjected to it and that has been disavowed by human rights organizations and the American Medical Psychological and Psychiatric Associations; and whereas the City of Norman workforce stands behind its support for the LGBTQ+ community through the Norman Police Department's use of rainbow design badges and pins, which have been a sign of equality for the LGBTQ community since the pride flag was adopted in 1978, and the recently launched LGBTQ Alliance Employee Resource Group here in the city of Norman. Now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as LGBTQ History Month in the city of Norman. I'd now like to recognize Darryl Callaway to accept the proclamation and say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, and City Council members. As I've gotten older, I've become more aware of the importance of looking back on my own personal history and just really taking the time to celebrate different moments or take the time to grieve. So really, this month does mean a lot to me, just again thinking about the past, where I've come from, where the community has come from, and where we're going. So again, I would love to thank you all for all the progress that we've made, and I really look forward to seeing what future progress we can make. So again, thank you, and hope you all have a great night.
Thank you. And I'm looking forward to the return of our pride parade and festivities, hopefully in 2022. Now on to council announcements. Remember to limit your comments to announcements only, and we'll begin with Councilmember Schuler from Ward Two.
I have no announcements this evening.
Thank you. Kelly Lynn, Ward Three.
I would just like to say it was an awesome job by Norman PD and Officer Casillas that put so much effort into the National Night Out last night and all the other local agencies. We had state agencies, we even had national agencies out there. Everybody that was involved in that was a great event for the community, and I look forward to more events associated like that in the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall, Ward Four.
Ditto on the success of National Night Out last night at Sooner Mall. It was quite the event with something for everyone and a little kid's nirvana to have all of the vehicles that were there with the lights flashing. So it's a great event and appreciate all the work that was put into it, and especially the extra work that was put into it because it had to be rescheduled. So it was a great event, and because it was rescheduled, we were able to attend and we really appreciated the opportunity to participate. I'd also like to announce the sixth annual Lake Thunderbird Workshop and Cleanup Event. It's coming up this Sunday, October 31st, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Sailing Club Boathouse, and one of the things that they will be doing at the workshop is helping people ask and answer the following question: How does my everyday life affect the environment of my community? So hope that you all will consider spending Sunday afternoon out at Lake Thunderbird. Also, I'd like to announce that the Senior Wellness Center groundbreaking event has been moved from this Thursday when it was scheduled because of potential high winds. It's now going to be held on Monday, November 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and this is another Quality of Life project from Norman Forward, and there are many, many, many senior citizens and advocates for a 21st Senior Citizens Center that are looking forward to finally seeing us break ground and move forward on the construction of this very important project. I'd also like to announce, because I've had some questions from not only my constituents but other residents in the community, that first of all, the Oversight Committee is canceled for November in observance of Veterans Day, and the City Council Ad-Hoc Committee to Address Homelessness will no longer be scheduling regular meetings. Many of you have noticed that the last couple of meetings have been canceled. As we anticipate the final report from Homebase, we will be moving discussion of addressing homelessness to the Oversight Committee so more council members can be a part of the discussion as we will begin to be working on our strategic plan. Currently, I am the only council member attending the ad hoc meetings, and similar to the monthly transit reports that are presented at the Community Planning and Transportation Committee, the Oversight Committee will now be home to adding monthly reporting on addressing homelessness to our Oversight Agenda. And finally, I'm wearing pink for a reason tonight. It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and this is a reminder to everyone the importance of screening and early diagnosis. Breast cancer has affected my mother, both of my grandmothers, and many members of my extended family. Fortunately, they all survived through early detection and treatment. I currently have a beloved member of my big, beautiful, extended family who is just beginning her journey against cancer, and to her I say tonight, you never know how strong you are until being strong is the only choice you have.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Tortorello, Ward Five.
I'd like to go ahead and say thank you to the National Night Out last night. The organizers did a fantastic job. This was my first time out, and I'd probably do it again next year, and that's it.
Thank you. Ward Six, Councilmember Foreman.
I'd like to resound the comments of my colleagues about National Night Out. It was a really great event last night. There were a lot of people there communicating with everyone. The cops really involved. The kids loved it. My daughter really loved it. She said that she didn't know cops had so much candy. So I've already suggested to Chief Foster that maybe on traffic stops they pass out candy too. That might, you know, make you feel better about getting a ticket. But other than that, it was a great night, and I have no further comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman, Ward Seven.
Thank you. Just want to remind everybody that this Thursday at 4:00 p.m. we have the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting. Once a month in this committee, we get an update on public transit ridership, as Councilmember Hall mentioned. If public transit or street infrastructure, sidewalks, any of that type of thing is of interest to you, then the CPTC Committee, once a month, is one that I would encourage you to attend or follow us on YouTube and watch the meetings. Feel free to reach out to me directly as the Chair of the Committee or your council member if you have any comments or questions, suggestions, anything like that regarding the agenda that we discuss in that committee. If you have any suggestions for items that we should talk about, then I would encourage you to please contact us and let us know. So every month on the fourth Thursday of the month at 4:00 p.m. here at City Hall, we have a pretty lengthy discussion usually about those items. So encourage you to tune in. Another item is, I've gotten a lot of several messages, and I have seen it myself, of course, but the removal of the tree line on 12th Avenue Southeast and Lindsay, just north of Lindsay, between Lindsay and Alameda, that's been there for probably 50 years, I'm not sure. It's been there my entire life growing up in that area. It's pretty much all been devastated and removed by one of our local utility companies. So I'm hoping that one of their representatives is going to be at the CPTC meeting this week or at an upcoming City Council Committee meeting to kind of give us an update on why they did that. It's definitely upsetting to me personally. It's upsetting to people that drive past it. Now there's just a bunch of rusted chain link fences that have been hidden behind a tree line for years. It's all visible. The sound barrier to protect the houses from Highway 77 is gone, and the shade from the western sunset is now gone as well for those homes. So I'm very interested to hear what all the reasoning was to completely remove all of them, especially given their historic status, in my opinion. So tune into that one, so we should have some answers maybe to provide those that have been interested and sent us emails about it. Also want to encourage everybody to check out the Norman Police Department Facebook. I've seen a lot of questions on social media about what's going on with trick-or-treating this year. Norman Police Department did post this afternoon about Sunday from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. is the official designated time in Norman to do that, according to the police Facebook. So take a look at that if you're interested. And then finally, I just would mention and give my thanks to Bill Hamm and those at the Jacobson House, which is in Ward Seven, currently anyway. It may not be in the future, but it is now, and they do a lot of great work in that house. And the last time I was there, it was mentioned to me that there were some maintenance and structural issues with the house that needed attention, and you know, I would definitely like to see if any way possible for the city to help out in that way, any way that we might be able to. I consider that a historic piece of property in Norman. It serves a current purpose, teaching people about our history and the Native people of this land. And so that's something that was mentioned to me by them last time I was there visiting, and so the proclamation tonight reminded me that that was something I wanted to mention to everybody and get out there for future consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ward Eight, Councilmember Peacock.
All my announcements have been covered by other councilmembers, so I'll just second whatever all has been said already.
Thank you. I also want to thank Norman PD. It was fun with the whole candy Halloween vibe, so I actually suggested to Sergeant Casillas, maybe we somehow keep that cool big event at Sooner Mall, but I did miss the smaller neighborhood parties as well. That's a fun way for councilmembers to connect with neighborhoods and myself as well. So hopefully we can just get two fun community events. I want to give a shout out to my Student Resident Roundtable. I have two of them. Last night, the 6th through 12th graders got a presentation on homelessness from Michelle Evans and had amazing questions. The future is bright here in Norman, Oklahoma, so be proud and excited about that. Our tour of the water treatment plant is coming up Saturday, November 6th at 10:00 a.m. Anyone is welcome to attend. It'll be the location on East Robinson. You can see the improvements that have been made since the last water rate election and talk about what we need to see in the next water rate election. We also have another vaccination pod coming up on November 7th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Little Axe Recreation Center. I was going to promote the one for this Sunday, but it's full. So I'd love to see that. Please get vaccinated, and when you go to one of the City of Norman pods, you get a $25 gift card to a local restaurant, as well as entered to win a $500 Visa gift card and Apple AirPods. So appreciate those that have gotten vaccinated, and we want to continue to see those numbers go up. All right, we'll now move on to the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval of all councilmembers, the item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Items 5 through Item 22 be placed on the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion to put Items 5 through 22 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. The motion on the floor is for Items 5 through 22 to be placed on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to place Items 5 through 22 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item five, Ordinance 2122-4 upon first reading by title, an ordinance granting special use for municipal uses in the A2 Rural Agricultural District for property located at 3,000 East Robinson Street. Item six, Ordinance 2122-5 upon first reading by title, an ordinance granting special use for municipal uses in the A2 Rural Agricultural District for property located at 3,500 Jenkins Avenue. Item seven, Ordinance 2122-6 upon first reading by title, an ordinance amending Section 431.5 of the zoning ordinance for off-street parking requirements for residential and multifamily and all office, commercial, and industrial districts, less C3 intensive commercial district. Item eight, submission of the Finance Director's Investment Report as of September 30th, 2021. Item nine, submission of the monthly departmental report for the month of September 2021. Item 10, bid for the purchase of Portland Cement Concrete for the Streets and Stormwater Divisions. Item 11, bid for the Norman Municipal Authority to purchase storage containers in the total amount of $133,516 from ANA Sheet Metal Products Incorporated and budget appropriation from the sanitation fund balances outlined in the staff report. Item 12, consent to recroach for property located at 3220 Sky Ridge Drive. Item 13, certificate of plaque correction for Red Canyon Ranch, Section 7. Item 14, Amendment 6 to contract 1516-110 between the City of Norman, Norman Municipal Authority and ADGPC, increasing the contract by $440,500 to add professional program management services for the emergency operations and communication center. Item 15, Amendment Number 2 to contract 1920-133 between the City of Norman, Norman Municipal Authority, and Crossland Construction Company Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by $667,562 to provide the guaranteed maximum price for construction services for Building 201, also known as City Hall, portion of the municipal complex renovation project. Adopting a project agent resolution and budget transfer between projects is outlined in the staff report. Item 16, final acceptance, where was I, of contract 2021-46 between the City of Norman Municipal Authority and United Turf and Track for the Norman Forward Griffin Park Phase 4 Northwest Field Improvements Project and final payment of $23,111.79. Item 17, Amendment Number 1 to contract 2021-75, a Norman Utilities Authority grant with E-Source Companies LLC, increasing the contract amount by $124,504 for a revised contract amount of $228,660 for the Advanced Water Meter Infrastructure Project. Item 18, bid contract and associated bonds with GNS Sign Services LLC in the amount of $107,860, change order number 1, increasing the contract amount by $1,150 for a revised contract. for a revised contract amount of $109,010 for the Wayfinding Phase One upgrades to Lindsay Street and around the municipal complex and adopting project agent resolution. Item 19, resolution 2122-41, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, and the Norman Utilities Authority appropriating $2,500,000 from the Water Reclamation Fund Balance, $117,000 from the Capital Fund Balance, and transferring $50,000 from General Fund Interfund Transfers to the Public Transportation Fund to close out year-end accounting entries for FYE 2021. Item 20, resolution 2122-43, a resolution of the Norman Utilities Authority authorizing the Chairman to submit a Bureau of Reclamation Grant application for Water Smart Grant, water and energy efficient grants for fiscal year 2022. Resolution 2122-45, selecting EST Incorporated as the City of Norman's appointed Bridge Safety Inspection Consultant to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for compliance with the National Bridge Inspection Standards. Item 22, resolution 2122-47, a resolution adopting the Anti-Displacement Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you. On to non-consent items. Item 23, consideration of acceptance, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of a donation of a GrayKey digital forensic tool and one-year service license valued at $25,270.50 from Operation Underground Railroad to be used by the Police Department for extracting information for iOS devices. This item was postponed from City Council meeting of October 12th, 2021 with a motion on the floor to accept. I'd like to recognize Deputy Chief Jackson to make a report on his findings since the last meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of weeks ago, I was standing before the council to request the acceptance of a donated item. And the donated item was proffered to us from an organization called OUR, which is Operation Underground Railroad. The item in question was a piece of equipment that's used to facilitate the unencryption of and the downloading of evidence from suspect cell phones in regards to child exploitation and human trafficking. I was asked and requested by Councilmember Studley to conduct an investigation regarding some of her concerns. The concerns was that the organization, Operation Underground Railroad, was affiliated with some nefarious shady type characters. And their marketing procedures were questionable and there were other issues concerning the organization. She then asked that I would do a little research and then come back before council and give them my findings. So as I looked through the evidence on the internet, and let me make this perfectly clear, is that I've been a detective for a number of years before I started promoting. I got 20 years doing major case investigations. One thing I've never done is investigated a case based on public approval, internet information, web-based information, social media sentiment. You know, there's a process in place and there's a system in place to ensure that there's equity when you investigate facts. It's based on facts, not on emotionality. And so having that in mind, understanding that I did look into the internet and I looked at some of the comments and concerns voiced on the internet. And what I can say is that sometimes when there's a little bit of smoke, there may be a fire. All right? And so as I'm doing my digging and I'm talking to, I reached out to Davis County District Attorney, Davis County District Attorney, they were investigating an allegation against OUR. So I reached out to them and they assured me there was an investigation ongoing. But there was no conclusion to the investigation. It was still pending. So they couldn't say one way or the other if these fears and allegations were based on any particular fact. Okay? So I then reached out to other people that also partnered with OUR and some returned my phone calls, some didn't. But I did reach out to some law enforcement agencies. And the ones that would talk to me said that they didn't have any particular concerns about OUR. You know, they had a pretty good working relationship with them. However, over the last few years, their relationship tended to degrade a little bit. There were some allegations made against the organization that they didn't quite feel comfortable with. And so they moved on from the relationship. And I'm not going to bore you with a whole lot of details that they provided to me as to why they moved away. But it was enough to convince me that I could not completely put these allegations to rest. I could not completely feel comfortable moving forward with this organization, knowing that there are some concerns out there and knowing some of those concerns could be valid. Right? So what I'm saying to you all tonight is that I want to thank Councilmember Studley for bringing it to our attention because this is a partnership here. We work together. We work together to provide the best service we can to those in our community. Right? And so because of that, I value her input and her concerns. And I think moving forward, I'm going to honor those concerns because again, I think there may be something there. And because there may be something there, I'm going to pull this item off the agenda or request it to be pulled off the agenda. And let's move on and try to find finding in another way. And I'm open to that. So if there's any questions about any of this, I'm here to answer.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, for looking into that issue and taking concern seriously. I value your opinion and your research. And if you think this needs to be pulled, I fully support that. I do want to make sure that we have all of the tools necessary to address human trafficking. As we all know, that is a crucial issue in our region. And I know that Norman PD takes it very seriously, along with Mary Abbott House and the sheriffs and all our other law enforcement partners. But we do have a motion to, yes.
I will say this about the tool itself. It is a phenomenal tool. It does exactly what it's supposed to do. It is an asset that would be invaluable, you know, in our tool chest to help combat internet crimes against children and human trafficking. And we would love to have it. So like I said, we will seek funding elsewhere and maybe get this thing get it approved. But make no doubt about it, the tool does what it is said to do and it's a very phenomenal tool.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor to accept, however, so we will need to vote. So councilmembers, the motion on the floor. But we have lots of questions. Okay. Councilman Foreman, still have questions after his recommendation?
Mine was just going to be, or my only question was, do you know that there's other companies or where this can be obtained outside of them? Do you know?
As far as other companies, this is the standard, you know.
That's not proprietary.
Yeah, no. Our constituents across the country, you know, this is the tool that they use and they've gone to it. And they've boasted about great results. What we currently have is a tool that we've used back when I was an investigator. We just updated the software. But it can't do what this tool can do. It cannot get into iOS phones and software and encrypt and get us into those phones to get that evidence. So this is really the standard, GrayKey.
Yeah, I was going to just say to the city manager that I would be interested in funding this ourselves if we had to for the police department. So that was all.
Thank you. For questions, Councilman Holman?
My questions have been answered. I appreciate your thoroughness in looking into that, those concerns, Deputy Chief, and agree with comments already made.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
First of all, in regard to the tool itself, is the $25,000 award that is part of this grant, would that be, is that close to the actual amount that you would need to acquire this?
It would be, but this is for the Cadillac version of that. This is for unlimited access to the downloads. Okay? Now you can get a lesser package, you know, for instance, say if you want 100 downloads or 200 downloads. What I would do is go back to my, my section, my special investigation section. I will ask them roughly yearly, how many of these downloads do we get? Do we use? I mean, so to pay for, kind of get an idea, pay as we go kind of deal versus the Cadillac version. So yeah, it's, it's, the tool itself is, I think it's not very expensive. It's the licenser and the user use every year that where the money gets up there. And again, the number of downloads is what gets it up there.
So I just wanted to make sure that the approximate amount of $25,000 would cover the cost of the tool that you need.
It would cover the cost of the tool and the user licenser to use it for the year.
Okay. And then I just would like to add a comment of how much I appreciate sincerely you using your investigative abilities instead of just Googling it on the internet to reach out to your colleagues across the country and to use the resources that you have available to you to come to this conclusion and actually looking into the facts of what the problems may be and the current challenges with this organization. So I really appreciate your due diligence.
Thank you. Councilman Schuler?
Yeah, I just have, I guess, a question about the tool as well. And I guess about the mechanism on how that would be used and kind of the process. How would we go about obtaining, you know, an iPhone or something that would use, that you would utilize the software to get this data off of? Like, would that be through court order, through, you know, subpoena powers? Like what?
Yes, we would need a search warrant to be able, not only to get into the phone, but also to obtain the phone. It may take as many as one, two, or three search warrants to actually get access inside the phone and extrapolate that information.
So a citizen would know that you were doing and utilizing something to get information off of their phone?
Absolutely.
This would not be without their knowledge?
Absolutely. And they'll also know what we get off the phone. We leave a return, explain it to them. This is exactly what we pulled off your phone. This is the evidence we obtained from your phone.
Okay. I'm just wanting to, full disclosure and kind of transparency of how this would be utilized and with public knowledge of how that would be utilized through kind of that process. And I would also like to echo what my fellow councilmembers have said about thanking you for doing your due diligence, for listening to the concerns that Councilmember Studley brought to our attention and reaching out to your colleagues and really investigating the organization. And thank you for, you know, pulling this when you didn't feel comfortable with that specific organization.
Thank you. Councilman Peacock?
Yeah, all my questions have been answered, but I'll, again, take the opportunity to say thank you for asking the hard questions and putting your due diligence. I know it means a lot to this body up here that we're armed with all the facts and able to make the best decision. So thank you again.
Thank you. Councilman Berlin?
Just real quick, just so I think everybody's clear, this is a tool that is completely available outside any connection to this company, right?
That is correct.
So you want the tool, you don't want the relationship with the company that was going to provide?
That is correct.
I just want to make sure that everybody knew that they're not, they are able to be a part and they're not connected. And that's it. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Councilman Tortorello?
Thank you, Chief. Just one last question. So when will we be able to get a tool like this working? What's the timeframe now? So we're not taking this tool. What's the timeframe from the tool that you're choosing?
I would think that as soon as we're able to get the funding, that we can actually reach out to the company, obtain this tool.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious. What did you find out about this company?
Sorry?
The company, the GrayKey? What did you find out about them? Was it disastrous that we could not use this tool?
It wasn't, honestly, it wasn't anything that was really disastrous or anything of that nature. It was just, again, there's even the stuff on the internet and addition to the internet, being to verify some of that stuff or validate it through our constituents across the country, some of the concerns. Now bear in mind, the investigation is still ongoing. There's no disposition on the case. There's no ruling by judge. There's nothing, nothing of that nature. But when you tend to have lots of information to, that may be kind of adverse to the nature of what the intent of the company is perhaps, and if you have your constituents verify, validate some of those concerns as well, that was enough for me and our agency to decide, you know, we can do other, we can do other things. We can, we can reach out for other funding sources and try to get this thing purchased that way.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered?
Mark Campbell?
Thank you. I just found out about this last Wednesday watching YouTube. And I reached out to Apple and Apple told me, I'm not representing Apple, but I am an iOS user. And I had government phones forever. I had track phones. They would break down. I had the highest cost government phone. It would break down every three months. I had a really bad landlord. A federal case was brought on my behalf and I couldn't document anything. So I decided it was worth, even on my fixed income saving, for an Apple device. And what, part of what you enjoy as an Apple customer is the fact that they protect your data. And Apple told me that they would not allow someone to get a warrant for an iOS device. And what I seem to be hearing from Deputy Jackson and the questions from City Council is that it would just go through a local judge. Now, I don't know. Apple also said something is rolling out later this year in regards to this issue. But as you may not know, with Apple, nothing is announced until it's officially announced. And I did share with City Council that Apple currently has features for parents to turn off some feature so that children cannot receive or send these images. And Apple already searches for these images and also the sharing of these images in the cloud. And there are reputable organizations such as the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, which was founded by Ronald Reagan and uses software called Palantir. I don't know if it's exactly the same, but it's not going to be an annual ask for money. And Apple also said basically that a police department would not be able to keep up with their constant updating of software. I don't know what that means. But I'm afraid that this may be a constant small police department trying to battle the largest corporation, I think, in the world. So I don't know. And it also kind of, just as a citizen, it seems like our police department is going after a certain company. And I have concerns about illegal searches and seizure. And I also have concerns, as in June of 2020, when our City Council member did not give our police department their full ask for funding and our City Council has iOS devices, I'm worried. What could police do? Anybody could be sued for anything. Deputy Jackson said, "We have been approached to get this software." Approached by who? And there could be suspected phones, suspected by whom? Anyone's phone could be suspected by anyone, as far as I know, as a citizen. So I have real concerns about illegal search and seizure and what could be the possible intent behind this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to say, my degree is in counseling. I had rape crisis team training and local perpetrators as well. And I have approached council for years about short-term rentals.
Okay, Mr. Campbell, your time is up for this issue.
And I haven't received any responses about it. So I'm a little concerned, if I'm suddenly concerned about this issue.
Okay, thank you. This is an opportunity for council to make final comments regarding this item. Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to accept the donation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Just to be clear, a yes vote, you're accepting it. A no vote means you're rejecting it. Our votes have been cast and the motion fails unanimously.
Thank you. Item 24, a public hearing regarding acceptance, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of a grant in the amount of $31,075 to the City of Norman and Cleveland County from the United States Department of Justice, the Bureau of Justice Assistance, through the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program with the Norman's portion of $27,875 to be used by the Norman Police Department for community engagement events and updating forensic services. Contract 2122-13 and budget appropriation from the special grant fund balance as outlined in the staff report. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast. The vote passes unanimously and the public hearing is now open.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Chief Foster to make a brief presentation. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Chief Foster to make a brief presentation.
I think most of you have heard this from the, it was sort of delayed of us accepting last year's JAG grant. This is the same grant for this, this year, starting in October. And the funds would go to supporting our new division and getting items that they need for like the event that we put on the other night, for National Night Out and other events such as the ID event, various things that that division will put on and reaching out to the community to get input from them. The other part is for our forensic unit, just for consumable goods that we use in the forensic section and to get them training and to keep them current. That's the two things this would be used for, and then the pass through to Cleveland County for the amount that they're gifted.
All right. Thank you, Chief. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Does not appear that there are. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the public hearing closes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to accept or reject the grant.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council regarding this item? The grant, councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 25, ordinance 2122-8 upon second and final reading. An ordinance rezoning property located at 453 West Grant Street from the Center City Form-Based Code to the Center City Planned Unit Development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Good evening, council. This is Gunner Joyce with Rieger Law Group here representing Jim Holmes Investments. Should have a PowerPoint pulled up here, but. All right, thank you. So Mr. Holmes is here tonight, along with a potential tenant, which kind of instigated, kicked off them talking to our office and while we're here. This is sort of an interesting one, a Center City PUD. Really sort of feels and looks a little bit more like a spud, but I'll, I'll talk you through why we're talking about a Center City PUD here. This is the site where basically at the corner of LaHoma and Gray Street. There you go, you can see the aerial. These two sites are owned by Jim Holmes, it's the parking lot. And then the rezoning is specifically to this portion of the building, although they are connected, it's different ownership. And so we're simply just rezoning the ownership of the applicant here. Here's a image from Gray Street. It's three different leasable spaces. Jim Holmes Investment or Insurance, that's his office, it'll remain. And then these two are leasable units that they've really had difficulty finding tenants for, for quite some time. And so that's one of the reasons it's instigated this. And here is the existing zoning designations for the site. It is Center City. It is the orange section of Center City, which is Urban General. However, in order to use the allowable uses under Center City Urban General, they would be forced to redevelop their site to comply with that long 92-page Center City document. So what that means is there's a parking setback line, which would not allow any parking in front of that portion of the site. All the parking's got to be moved to the rear. And then a required build line that would require the building to touch and start right there at, at the start of the property. And as you saw from the area, and I'll, I'll show you again in a second, the building doesn't comply with either of those two allowances. So then their only other option, not to use Center City allowances, would be to use the C1 legacy zoning. And what that means is it used to be forever C1, which would allow them by right to have medical marijuana uses and, and some other uses that have been passed since 2017. But since it's a legacy zoning, any new use added to C1 cannot be used at this site. They're basically stuck in time, the moment that Center City was passed on the site. And so that really kind of sums it up. They could either use their legacy C1, which is 2017, and never allows for any new ones. Or they, under the terms of the Form-Based Code, are required to kind of scrape the site and rebuild. There's also another added consideration here because they are in the floodway. And so they're essentially prohibited from building in compliance with the Center City Form-Based Code because under the city's floodway designations, they are only allowed to keep the existing footprint of the existing building. So, so you could see, they're kind of stuck in a hard place here and that's why we're in front of you tonight. So I, I will add that, you know, this is really in furtherance of the allowance of a CCPUD. The Form-Based Code talked about some different types of circumstances where a CCPUD would be appropriate. And I really think this is a prime example. It allows for an alternative development when the strict regulations of the Form-Based Code can't be met that is here because of the floodway, because of the building configuration. And the cost that would be associated with a complete redevelopment, even if the floodway wasn't an aspect here. And then also, this will promote efficient economic use of the site because of the whole driving force here is, is more tenants in a vacant space. We know already, there's a prospective tenant in the audience that would be using this if this is passed. So, you know, this request is already generating the potential for, for new users. Here's the site plan. Again, the purpose of this is no change, is really an interesting PUD because it's not about allowable uses, really. It's solely about not requiring redevelopment of the building. All the allowable uses are already allowed as a matter of right under the Form-Based Code's current designation. So we're just really talking about not scraping it and rebuilding. Quick summary, I'll skip to the staff report quote, "They do not see a negative impact on the intent of the Form-Based Code." And they believe this will help bring commercial activity back to this section of Gray Street. No neighbors attended pre-development, although Councilmember Hall was there. No audience participation at Planning Commission, and Planning Commission recommended approval of 42. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
So we had a nice chat at that pre-development meeting. This is, first of all, I want to start by saying that I was first made aware of this project by Mr. Holmes' daughter, who contacted me in May, and it's now October, the end of October. And as Mr. Joyce presented to you all, this is really an unusual challenge because there are so many different pieces to this. And so this is a perfect example of why we have the vehicle within the Center Form-Based Code for Center City PUD. Because we really couldn't address Mr. Holmes' issues without having this path forward. So, and it really all began because they've had so much trouble leasing their storefront because of the pandemic and the consequences of the pandemic. And so I think they had no idea, when they first asked this question, what a complicated process it was going to end up being. But anyway, it is exactly as you have presented, it's unusual in the fact that we're trying to preserve the status quo. And I think you did a fine job of presenting that. So I have two questions. They're actually not for you, Mr. Joyce, they're for city staff. Because when I reviewed the Planning Commission presentations, both Ms. Mukala and at the time, Mr. McClelland and I, is he, I don't think I see him here tonight, but hopefully Mr. Sturts can address this. So Ms. Mukala, if you wouldn't mind helping us out here. So there's multiple, multiple pieces to all of this, but I thought you did such a great job of summarizing the challenges here. And if you could just address the whole concept of legacy zoning versus what is required now under Center City Form-Based Code and how the addition of the medical marijuana industry to our state has impacted this particular request.
It's a big question.
I know.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. My name's Beth Mukala. I'm with the City Attorney's Office. And so I, I think that Mr. Joyce's phrase, frozen in time, is a good way to put it. Legacy zoning's a very particular thing, and the City of Norman has very consistently applied it historically. And that is what's important here, is that we're being very diligent about treating this as we have every other legacy zoning situation. And so to do that, we have to look at the code as it existed at that moment in time. And it simply did not have medical marijuana uses. And another interesting and unique thing about our code is that we list our uses. So when medical marijuana went from illegal to legal, we had to create those uses in order to accommodate them under our code. And so by adding those uses, so specifically as a line item legislatively, legally, that means they simply did not exist before. You, you can't pretend that they did or that they fit in a category. Some municipalities use categorical zoning and have that option. We did not. And so based on the way our code was, this is the way we move forward. And as a result, when we have situations like this, we need to make absolutely clear that public notice is given. And, and so that's what we're doing here. And I agree that Mr. Joyce succinctly presented it inaccurately.
Thank you. And then, I don't know, okay, Mr. O'Leary, you're gonna, you're gonna take this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Council. Sean O'Leary, Director of Public Works. I gather you're asking about floodplain regulations?
Yeah, so here is my, here's my question. So this property is within the floodplain. And again, I thought, from listening to the Planning Commission meeting, that Mr. McClelland at the time did a fine job of explaining the peculiarities of, of the floodplain issues too. So if you could just address in a similar fashion and summarize what the C1 legacy zoning requirements are and if this applicant complied with those requirements, and also if this property desires to be redeveloped in the future, what would the requirements be to redevelop the property according to Center City Form-Based Code?
Gotcha. I might need help from Director Hudson on the C1 legacy zoning question, but I'll try to address the floodplain regulations, Councilmember. So this property is actually located in the Imhoff Creek floodway, which is the most restrictive of our floodplain regulations. And I'll just read here from the staff report, it should be noted that due to these floodway restrictions, this lot can never be redeveloped outside of the current footprint of the existing building. So as Gunner indicated, if this building were ever to be removed, they could only put it back in its current footprint. They would need a floodplain permit to do that, and they would probably need to elevate the finished floor, finished floor elevation two feet above its current elevation. So this is a, this is one of those pre-existing, non-conforming buildings. My guess, it was built in the pre, preliminary to the 1976 floodplain regulations adoption here. Like many of our buildings, and the Imhoff Creek floodway and floodplain were built prior to 1976, meaning that it can stay there. There are no regulations that would apply, certainly not to this case tonight. But if they were ever to redevelop or want to redevelop the physical structure, it would be a really challenging thing to do.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Good evening. Take this off. So I, what I was hoping to confirm was a statement that Mr. McClelland made at the Planning Commission meeting that even if he was to exist under the legacy zoning, which is C1, that his building actually already meets the requirements for that floodway now. I, I don't even know if you can address that. That might be something that.
So regarding the floodway?
Mm-hmm. But the building, the building now is actually in compliance with being located within the floodway as far as whatever they did at the time.
Yes.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you. Those are all, all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Gunner. So this one definitely I've, I've found to be one of the more complicated, harder to understand items that I've come across since I've been on council, just because I couldn't visually see what was, what you were asking to change about it. And it does seem to be a pretty unique situation, so. But just to be clear, there is nothing changing about the, the look of the building, the appear, I mean, there, I assume a new business may have different signs that they put up, but there's no remodeling of the building. It's not going to, they're not adding a second story to it. There's nothing changing as far as people driving past it, really.
You are absolutely correct. Since it is Center City PUD, essentially, in this PUD document we go through and we say signage, parking requirements, open space. What we've done here on all of those, except signage, is we've, we've said everything will stay exactly the same. If you ever redeveloped, which again, likely cannot happen because of floodway, you would then revert back to the standard Urban General requirements, City, City Form-Based Code. So you are absolutely right, nothing changed. The only language we've added in signage that's different is the tenant signages. You know, the Jim Holmes sign and the, these three, we've stated that that type of sign can remain only because the Center City Form-Based Code's got specific signage requirements that are, frankly, they're, they're kind of restrictive. And so we think that these might exceed that allowance, so we wanted to make sure. I didn't want to inadvertently say we will comply with Center City signage, and then that means immediately we got to go take down Jim Holmes sign. So we've said those can remain. That's the only real variance, other than, you know, the, the theme of this is the building will remain the same.
Okay. Thank you, Gunner. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And then just a clarification maybe from Mr. O'Leary, if I can. Just to, so about this property, if it were to be redeveloped, just so I understand you correctly and the, and the code and everything, if it were to be redeveloped, it could be redeveloped in compliance with the Center City, bringing the building up closer to the street, but the square footage of the building could not be more than what it is now. But they could move it around on the existing paved property, as far as where the building was.
Generally, that's correct, Councilmember, without getting into the weeds. But essentially, it is sort of what floodplain regulators call the shadow of the, of the floodplain. Imagine the water is running from the north of this building, south, when we're in a flood. It's already blocked, so the floodplain regulations already take into account that that building is there. So if they were ever to take it down, they would have to build in that same shadow or that same footprint, and that would be in compliance with the 1976 adopted floodplain.
And it is in the floodway?
It's in a floodway, which again, is the, the most restrictive floodplain regulations that we have and any city has. Again, if I were ever giving advice to the owner, I'd say, "Don't touch it. Don't do anything with the building. Leave it alone. Make do with what you have," which is what they're asking to do tonight. I think that's wise.
So under today's regulations, it's possible that from flood all the way to Park Drive would be a open green space with a creek running through it if it.
That's exactly right.
If this area were developed under current.
Yeah, one of the more, many of the buildings that we're all familiar with on Main Street fall in the same category or worse. So one of the most prominent cases in recent years was Sprouts. When they looked at that building, that entire building is in the floodway. It really needs to come out, in the perfect world. But that obviously doesn't make economic sense to the owner, nor did it when they converted it to a Sprouts grocery store.
Thank you. Yeah, the Bishop's Landing project was when I first really learned about floodway and floodplain and how they were different because the Bishop's Landing had a couple of the apartment buildings in the, in the creek, basically. They were almost right in there, and the new project removed those. And that was a big point of that, was removing buildings out of the floodway. And so I appreciate the clarification.
You bet. If I may, Councilmember, I would just want to clarify for Councilmember Hall as well. The floodplain regulations adopted in '76 and then updated since are an overlay zoning district. They're embedded in Chapter 22, but they're not retroactive. I should have said that before. They don't go backwards in time. So all of those buildings in the floodplain and floodway throughout the city, particularly in Imhoff Creek floodway, or floodplain, were allowed to remain, and they will always be allowed to remain until they redevelop. be allowed to remain until they redevelop. And you can see some evidence of that. We're starting to see redevelopment that's reaching that age. And that's why you see a building, in fact, there's a residence right down here on Dawes, about a block from us, that is two feet, or actually three feet above every other house around it. They decided to redevelop that house. And when they did that, they had to raise it to that floodplain regulation plus two. So that's why you're starting to see those things. If that were to happen here, one of these buildings, or this building, would be two feet above the next door. Probably just wouldn't practically work.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Peacock.
Sean, don't go too far. So kind of a follow-up on Councilmember Holman's questions. I understand that if the building is ever redeveloped, it has to go back essentially to the same footprint. But is, is that in the same in terms of height? Or if we, basically if we approve this CCPUD tonight, are we limited to one story going forward if this is ever redeveloped? Or would that be more in line with the vision of...
That's a great question, Councilmember. I don't, I think they're unrelated issues. You're not doing anything tonight that would impact the floodplain aspect of this property in the future. Redevelopment would, would have to comply with all of the current zoning standards at that time. So you may change Center City Form Based Code in the future, and, and it would have to comply with that new standard as well. So think of it that way. You know this from your experience, that whenever redevelopment occurs, that redevelopment must comply with the standards of that day, and all of the previous coding, codes and zoning regulations are no longer valid.
I appreciate that clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. Do we have any speakers registered? No, we do not. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall.
Okay. Like I mentioned before, this really is the first request like this that I've seen since I've been on city council. And I think we have shown how unique this request is in so many ways. And that is the beauty of having the vehicle of the Center City PUD to be able to use this to address the issues of this particular property owner. And the unique aspect of it is it's their desire to maintain the status quo for all the reasons that we've just talked about. So medical marijuana uses are allowed in C1 and in Center City Form Based Code. We discussed the issues of the C1 legacy zoning versus the Center City Form Based Code. And just to reiterate, when I first spoke with Mr. Holmes and his daughter, the reason that we're even seeing this tonight is directly related to the adverse consequences that we're seeing related to the pandemic for property owners and their ability to find tenants. This storefront had been vacant for months. They had really reached out into the community to try to rent the property. And the only person who actually was interested in discussing leasing the space was Mr. Martin, who I believe is here tonight too. And that began this journey with Mr. Holmes and his daughter to move forward with the request. So this property is also located at almost the western boundary of the urban general designation in Center City Form Based Code. It's on Gray Street, but just one block to the west is the boundary. So while my preference would be to redevelop under Center City Form Based Code in the future, the current economic conditions and the adverse consequences that many property owners are challenged with resulting for the pandemic, this just seems a great solution for the property owner. And I think we understand what would happen if they would ever want to develop, redevelop in the future. But I'm pleased that Mr. Martin is interested in doing business in Norman and working with the Holmes family through what can be, feel like a long process to just try to lease a space to do your business. So thank you all for your patience, and I will be supporting this application tonight. I also wanted to take a moment to comment on some of the changes that we're seeing tonight that I think are the result of potential limitations of our new public meetings directory. And I'm using this particular agenda item as an example. So the council does not get a printed agenda book. We rely on online access to agendas, minutes, and supporting documents for each agenda item, just like the public does. So tonight, the documents attached to this specific agenda item, as well as other zoning applications that we're seeing, are inadequate. For example, there was a protest letter for this item. It's not included in the documents for the agenda item. There's no protest map included for this item either. This was mentioned in the planning commission minutes, but no documents are included, so that we have no idea what the substance of the protest letter was. I'm also, the only reason I'm aware that there is a protest map is because I saw it presented at the planning commission meeting. Many of you are aware that it's my habit to attend predevelopment meetings for any Ward Four zoning applications that come before the council. It's also my habit to intend in person or review the YouTube recording of the planning commission meetings. This is my choice because I can safely say I am the only council member currently sitting on the dais who has the luxury of time to do this on a consistent basis. No council member should be expected to add this meeting to the already considerable amount of time that it takes to be prepared for council meetings. We should be confident that we have all the information discussed at the predevelopment meetings and the planning commission meetings as part of the public record. The planning department staff has been exemplary at providing a written transcript of the planning commission meetings. This is a practice that not only benefits the council and the public, but is the preference of the planning department staff so that they have a complete written record of every zoning application that comes before council. This detailed record is invaluable to council members to get a full understanding of the deliberation of the planning commission. I'm using this item as an example because I was not able to attend the planning commission meeting in September like I usually do. I was able to view the recording of the meeting on the city of Norman's YouTube channel. Because I could take the time to do this, I am aware of the informed and robust discussion that took place and a very thoughtful question and answer period between commissioners and city staff that delved into the finer points of why this applicant was advised to pursue the CCPUD option to accomplish their goals. So I also have a clear idea why commissioners voted yes or no on this four-two vote. None of this is currently reflected in the minutes. I know who was there. I know what documents were submitted. I know that a staff report was presented. I know who represented the applicant, and I know that a presentation was made. That's it. I haven't a clue from the minutes what was presented or discussed. This may be a result of growing pains and transitioning to a new system. I would like to request that we review this and restore the written transcript for the planning commission minutes. And while we're at it, I would also like to have the slides presented by city staff and by the applicant at planning commission meetings be included in the documents attached to zoning application agenda items. Anything less is hampering our ability to fully understand the zoning applications before us and our ability to make the best decisions regarding, regarding the public health, safety, and welfare of our community. We are charged with making the final decision in a lengthy and costly process that applicants are required to do when requesting zoning or land use changes that under current zoning code or land use plans, they are not allowed to do. This process includes neighborhood input, deliberation of a voluntary advisory board before being included on the council agenda. Tonight, we have access to less information than the planning commission on which to base our decisions. This must be addressed.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I absolutely agree with my colleague, Councilmember Hall, on just the information that is needed and the time it takes to really know what we're voting on can be a lot if you have a full-time job, if you have kids, you have all those things. Being able to watch every single committee meeting in full can be a real challenge. And so having as much supporting documents as possible is definitely something. But as Councilmember Hall mentioned, there have been a lot of changes to systems here at City Hall for how we do meetings and how we have all this information. So hopefully I, we can get those addressed as well. So my comments about this particular project are very similar as well. I would absolutely love someday in the future if this property were to be either turned into green space for the floodplain or redeveloped in the Center City Form Based Code form. That would be wonderful. But that's not where we're at today. And I absolutely want to make sure we can do anything we can to help this property owner get this space leased out and generating sales tax for the city and property tax for the schools and the county and all those other things. So I will definitely be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments from council, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
I will just say to your statement, Councilmember Hall, the minutes that are now provided to you are what we call legislative minutes. That's the exact same minutes that we provide for city council. I understand certainly you all have been used to verbatim minutes as far as planning commission goes and many of our other committees. And I'm sure we can come to some happy medium in between. The part of the issue for staff is that the number of committees we have to support, and we tried to reduce those, but instead we added more, so it requires more staff time to do the minutes. And so that is why you're seeing less. So we can try to come to some happy medium, but it's certainly not an intent to, you know, keep you from the information.
Thank you.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion for final reading passes unanimously.
Item 26, ordinance 2122-9 upon second and final reading. An ordinance rezoning property located near the southwest corner of Lindsay Street and 12th Avenue Southeast from planned unit development to simple planned unit development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant? Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. This is similar, but not nearly as complex. And so I'll, I'll try and be quicker here. But we are basically at the corner of Lindsay and 12th Avenue Southeast. The applicant here is East Village at 12th Avenue LLC. This whole site is one PUD. And so the reason that this is a spud is we are just rezoning less than five acres of that overarching PUD, which triggers the spud ordinance as opposed to a PUD ordinance. We're talking about only the ground floor uses of these three mixed-use buildings. I'll walk you through them from the north to the south, but it's a pretty cool development. It's residential on top with, with ground floor retail, commercial uses, a little bit like urban general Center City before it was cool. The problem is that this site has had a really difficult time leasing those spaces. So again, this is a similar discussion, especially with the pandemic impact on retail spaces. That was the instigator here again of, of trying to get more allowable uses in the site. So this is a rezoning to a spud solely to add more allowable uses. Again, like we talked on the last one, no change to the site, no change to 2025 designation, no change to the zoning of the rest of the PUD, which is multifamily residential and then a CVS up here to the north. It's solely about the ground floor retail spaces. Would note that we are close to some pretty intense commercial areas. C2 general commercial is right across the street, and there's a C1 local commercial district up here at this intersection. And so we've kind of merged the two here. This is a list that we've provided that mirrors and is based off of that C1 local commercial district. So here's why this request is in front of you tonight. So under the current PUD, under the allowable use section, there's really just this paragraph. And again, I showed you that whole PUD area. The first sentence here at the top applies to the section that we're seeking to rezone. It's difficult to read, but what it says is that it will be mixed-use development, including retail uses along the east side of the site with three stories of multifamily above. So what that is, is three stories multifamily upstairs and retail downstairs. That's it. That's, that's all the guidance there is. It simply says retail. So as you can tell already, and as Ms. McCullough just said on the last item, the city of Norman is now doing an exhaustive list. You know, they, they list out specific uses. This is an older PUD that was before really that practice was enforced the way it is today. And so what we're doing here is, is complying with the spud ordinance and listing out more specific uses in hopes that this generates more end users for those commercial ground floor sites. A lot of those spaces have never had tenants. Some of them are even unfinished inside. So the goal here is again, to kind of adjust to the way that rental spaces are going. It's away from the more traditional retail and more into, obviously, the hot one right now is marijuana, but even additional uses. Office uses are now allowed, you know, church is allowed. So if someone wanted to get creative, if that site worked well for them, there's more flexibility on the property. So that's a quick summary. Staff report has noted that this amendment's not likely to increase the intensity of uses allowed on the site. Really, this was always thought of as commercial with, with residential up top. That's what we're still seeking to do, just hoping to fill those commercial spaces instead of the vacancies that exist today. The change in allowed uses is not expected to increase traffic. That's from the staff report as well. And this one also recommended approval from planning commission with no audience participation during the public comment. There was a predevelopment meeting. I only put this up because it's not the standard line that you usually see. We did have a neighbor attend, listen to the presentation, and stated that they had no issues with the request. So I'd like to put that up there.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I'm very familiar with this property, grew up in this area, and many might remember the, maybe the worst apartment complex in Norman history used to be located on this, this property. And then city took that over and got rid of it in the late 90s. It sat vacant for years, and then in the early 2000s was redeveloped one building at a time. I think the CVS was first, and then the three buildings after it, and then the townhomes behind it. So it's seemingly done very well as far as its development over the last 15 years. It has had many different businesses in and out, and some of, some of them have been there for a while. But on the information, when I was reading through the item, I didn't have a list of, there was a list of what was, what is already allowed, but I wasn't finding anything that identified what was being proposed to be added to it. Is there additional stuff to what you just showed us? It seems to about cover everything else I could think of, but...
That essentially is it. I can say, you know, we have also started in kind of a broader discussion outside of this item in our allowable use lists. We, we list out more modern uses that are not always straight from the C1 ordinance, for example, because C1 still says leather-making, you know, goods, key shop. And so for one example, in this one, we have drafted in coffee house or coffee shop in hopes that a future tenant would get this and say, oh, that's my use. So there are differences like that that probably would have already been allowed. But I think the list that I showed is, is a pretty good list of, of additional allowable uses that staff likely wouldn't have said that's close enough to, you know, dried goods or something along those lines.
And one of the, one of the additions that I kind of have a little bit just question about, might have a question for our legal staff. I think Beth might be the best to answer it. But my concern about adding the church part is non-sales tax generating business. And there is a provision in state law, not necessarily about the church part, but the church being a non-sales tax generating business, one thing. Using commercial retail space for a business that doesn't generate any sales tax, some concern, not a deal breaker. But the other part is the childcare center. And so our city's attorney might clarify, because in state law regarding medical marijuana, there's a distance from schools and, it's a thousand actually, it's a thousand feet between schools and any kind of marijuana business. So what we want to avoid is that if a church were to locate in one of these buildings, we want to avoid is that if a church were to locate in one of these buildings, that was that going to prohibit a marijuana company from locating somewhere on this site as well? And it may not, childcare facility may not fall under the school definition under state law, so.
I'll take a crack at it and then hand it over to Ms. Mukla to add in, but we recently gave a talk on this, so I'm a little up to speed on it. But the thousand-foot distance, I believe, still only applies to dispensaries. And so there are medical marijuana businesses that don't have to take into that consideration distances from schools. They did just recently update the school definition to add in, I think, kindergartens and preschools, but daycares are not included in that. And so to your point, you could likely have a daycare and a dispensary in this under state law. There, again, being the landlord, you know, representing the landlord of this, you could have rules in place that are even above and beyond that, because obviously you're kind of stepping into maybe an issue between tenants there that the landlord might not want to deal with. So you've got an extra additive private control there through rules and regulations and a little bit of tenant selection that might help prevent that on the front end.
And the same thing could apply to churches. So really, churches and schools are the only two entities I can think of, and parks perhaps, but where we have setbacks, where certain businesses can't be within certain feet of those types of things. And so I would just want to make sure that, you know, if there were a church located in one of these buildings that doesn't prohibit a bar from opening in the storefront next to them, if that's what the property owner wants to allow.
And I do think you've got an excellent point there. Both of those really kind of come from the city's current list. Churches are allowed in mostly all zonings as a special use. When you do a spud or a PUD, we've talked with staff on this, and they don't allow us to keep the ability to come back and request a special use when you're a spud. And so if we want to have the special use allowance, we need to draft it into that list. That's why it was included. I do think that you're spot on, that the landlord probably wants to keep those out in order to keep the marketability of all their spaces maximized.
Okay. That's the only questions I had. I've not received any comments from that neighbor, any calls about this particular change. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peacock?
Thanks. Of any of these proposed uses, do you anticipate any additional parking required for the site? Because I know it's already pretty landlocked, so I just didn't know if you anticipate anything like that.
I don't anticipate it. We did specifically state in the spud that they are required to comply with all of the regulations. So I mean, in theory, if a user comes in later that we're not thinking about this time, and it adds parking that is not on site, then that user will either have to probably rezone to get a variance from that requirement or go somewhere else. That's how that plays out.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuler?
Thanks. I had the same question about the allowable uses based on what we had gotten, so thank you for addressing that question. And like the last applicant that we just approved, are there any new tenants that are interested under these new allowable uses that are already interested in locating at this location?
There are. There is a dispensary that, as soon as this really was sort of a driving force of this rezoning, that asked if they could go in here. And the property owner had an initial conversation with city staff, realized it very similar to legacy zoning a little bit, in the fact that even when we, in spuds and puds, adopted in C one, if at the time that was not an allowable use in C one, we'd have to come back. And so very similar here, that's why we had to come back. So yes, there are tenants already interested.
Great. This might be, this is probably for staff, but I noticed, kind of to Councilmember Hall's points about the notes that we're getting, I noticed in the minutes from Planning Commission that there was one protest that was submitted that we can't see. And so I was just questioning what was that, what was in that protest letter? What was the concern that was raised since we couldn't read it?
While she walks up here, it was submitted by CVS, and not to speak for the letter at all, but it was mostly anti-marijuana, was mostly of that effect.
Councilmember, that is correct. It was from the CVS there to the north, and Gunnar pretty much outlined what it was.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious.
Okay. There are no public comments registered for this item, so are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item twenty-seven, Resolution twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one, amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to remove property located at thirty-seven sixty-six East Robinson Street from country residential designation to mixed-use designation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the land use plan resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Hello. Okay, let me see. Oh, go back. All right. So this is my property. I'm the owner. I've grown up in the area, probably two parcels behind it. I'm very familiar with the place. My whole life I've done motorcycles, jet skis, powersports type stuff. This is a, I'm doing this amendment so that I can run my business out of this location. Currently, it's a rental property. We picked it up probably a couple of years ago. Been doing that ever since. It's just, it's an old trailer house on it. It's kind of rundown. It's not, I want to develop it into something much cleaner, and we want to build our house out there. And so this business is just mine. I'm a single employee. And yeah, that's, let's see. I sell this stuff. It is just basically powersports. We want to be able to sell, buy, you know, just toys, basically. A little background on myself, I left corporate America last year because I wanted to actually do something, you know, a little more meaningful. I do believe that this business just promotes happiness and, I don't know, good times throughout the community. And so, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. Do you all have any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Peacock?
Thanks. Could you speak a little bit to how some of this inventory will be stored and displayed on site?
Yes. So currently, just to give you an idea, I have twenty jet skis, three dirt bikes, and like a couple three-wheelers and a four-wheeler. We've got, let me go back here. So these parking spaces right here would be used to house a lot of that, as well as inside this unit right here. Obviously, the stuff that can store outside, the jet skis will be undercover. You know, right now, it's kind of, just kind of out, sitting out here in this field. This plan moves that to the side of that building, and also this location to the side of that building where that parking spot is. You can't see from the road. There's a hill that kind of just covers all of it. So moving that there and using this plan would make it very aesthetic. It shouldn't cause any problems with neighbors. And I mean, I've even talked to all the neighbors about it. Yeah, that's, oh, sorry, I forget, the parts. A lot of them are drop shipped, meaning I don't, they don't even come here. I do have a small inventory of maybe fifty items or so, but most of them are drop shipped.
So you won't have a large yard full of parts and equipment?
Say what?
You won't have a large yard or anything full of parts?
Yeah, exactly. No, nothing like that.
Oh, are you going to be providing any screening along the park in there? I mean, it sounds like the hill is going to act in terms of...
Yeah, yeah. And actually, you know, part of this use, we amended the fencing requirement because per regulation, we would have to put screened fence up, but the screened fence itself would be the ugliest thing on the property if we did that. And by moving the storage to that side of the building, there's nothing, there's not even, this is all wooded area behind, wooded area to the east. So, yeah.
And lastly, do you plan on doing any kind of salvage or maintenance work out there on any of these vehicles?
No, not currently. The, as far as salvage, that was a concern, and that brings up another point. I was going to, there were two concerns by neighbors, and one was noise from motorcycles and equipment being operated, and the other was a salvage yard. And so it's new, it's, I have sold some used parts in the past. That's on a personal note. This business is all new parts. It's all, like I said, drop shipped. And also, we don't allow any customer test rides at all. So there's no...
I appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. A similar question about the noise and customers riding, because we did approve a motorcycle shop to go in downtown a few years ago, and it was fine and everything, except they did allow regular testing of the motorcycles.
Yeah.
So it'd be kind of up and down the street almost all day throughout the week. So that was one thing I would think residents around there would definitely be concerned about if you were doing that, but you're saying that's not happening?
Yeah.
And then the wooded area behind the house, you're not planning to chop all that down or anything like?
Oh, no. No.
And then the existing house and other structures, you're removing that, removing all that and building a new?
There's the accessory dwelling unit that exists there now, and then there's a manufactured home that also exists just under where that proposed dwelling unit is. So the plan is to remove that manufactured home completely and build our house there.
Okay. And for staff, maybe Ms. Hudson, just to clarify, for neighbors and those concerned about the activity, if we approve this, the pud is restrictive, so not just any mixed-use business can come in here and do anything they want, or build something new on the property, or do any of those things. This pud says this is what's going to happen, and the neighbors can look at that and say, okay, I know what's going to happen there.
Councilmember Yessi, correct. So within the pud document, he has listed the vehicle sales. He defined in his pud as well, the vehicle type definitions. And then he listed the other uses, as you can see there in the document.
And under, just a regular rezoning, an applicant would be allowed to do anything with underneath that zoning category. But by going through a pud, they're limiting and restricting and putting in, writing, this is what we're going to do.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall? No? Okay. I have a quick question. So, you know, we try and keep the rural area protected here in Norman. That's actually been a topic of contention recently. But it looks like, you say vehicles, but it was also water vehicles, correct? Like seadews and whatnot?
Yeah, just personal watercraft, so smaller watercraft, no boats.
So what about, and I'm looking at here, and it says vehicles and vehicle parts. So are you going to have cars as well, or just these?
No. I mean, we did, we did do a, I've done a single, like, race car build one time. So like, I could see, you know, maybe having a one-off project that involved a car, but no, it's not a, not a like car lot at all.
But the personal water vehicles are your bread and butter here.
I started, when I started the business, I probably bought too many of them, and because of market fluctuation, when, you know, they sell better in the springtime, and they're real cheap in the fall. So I started, that's where I invested a lot. It's kind of evening out. I'm kind of, the reason I have more is because I bought too many. And so as I sell those, it should be about, probably, it'll probably stay the majority, but maybe more like, you know, forty, fifty percent of inventory.
And what would be the other part?
Dirt bikes, four-wheelers. Yeah.
Okay. Well, you know, one of the things that I think is important to recognize, that if they're going to put a business out there in an area where there's normally not a business, at least it's relevant to where you could use said items.
Oh, yeah.
So it seems like it would be a good fit for enjoying the rural outdoor areas and our urban state park that we have within our city limits. How loud will these things be, though? You mentioned like a one-time race car, but I also want to protect the reason why people tend to move out in these areas.
Yeah. I mean, they, the, certain, certain models obviously are louder than others. Obviously, the jet skis, and I'd say most of the four-wheelers are similar to a lawnmower. The jet skis obviously don't even get ran like hardly any half of the water, so that's not even, those, starts of those would be very rare. Four-wheelers similar to, I'd say, a lawnmower. And then some of the dirt bikes, they can be a lot louder, just depending. They've got some two-stroke models. It sounds like an angry weed ear, like the wang, kind of...
And what will be the hours of your business? You're not going to be working at 2:00 a.m. on these?
Oh, no. Nine to five, Monday through Friday, and generally like coming in late. I mean...
Okay. All right. Any other questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman?
Just a couple, just, I was reading the protest letter. It just might give you an opportunity to address some of the concerns listed about it, about the disposal of things like oil, antifreeze, other toxic-ish items, you know, is sensitive watershed area, as most of Ward Five is in the rural area, and we do want to protect those areas, but I don't know how you dispose it.
No, absolutely. Yeah, that was, that was actually the biggest, I initially came before Planning Commission with the intent to do a like full-service shop. I took that off because I did, I talked to councilmember, I don't, I think he was the older, the guy, I don't know, I think you replaced him.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes, Nash, that guy.
He has a name.
I forget. I apologize. Yeah, he, we talked it over, and I mean, that is a valid concern. We wouldn't want really any shop to ever be allowed, like to commercially come in and potentially dump any, any vehicle fluids that could make its way out to Thunderbird. So there's, there's no shop mechanic maintenance use listed on this pud. It's only, strictly sales. Any of the, I mean, it is a shop, like, area, you know, I have equipment in there that is my own personal equipment. I'll probably, you know, clean up some skis here and there. I have contract labor that I can, if I do get something that needs to get fixed, that would, that would go elsewhere. I would not be involved.
And then it was mentioned that there's a dirt bike track been built on the property? I don't know. I didn't address that, too.
Yeah, so the, where that concrete approach is, I have cleared out, there's a, I mean, it's like, it's a big hill there, right? So I've... So I've cleared out the spot that that roach, that the approach will come through. So there's two dirt mounds, you know, kinda pulled. And this is probably what made that neighbor protest, but I, you know, kinda smoothed them out on each side and rode my own dirt bike over a couple times. I, I haven't done it since, it was just, it was there, it was a fun thing to do.
Okay, that's all the questions I have then, I appreciate you clarifying some of those concerns.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions from council and no public comment have signed up, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been, and passes by a vote of seven to, or excuse me, six to two, voting against Councilmember Hall, Councilmember Schuler.
Thank you. Item twenty-eight, twenty-one, twenty-two, upon second and final reading, rezoning property located at thirty-seven sixty-six East Robinson Street from A2 Rural Agricultural District to PUD Planned Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding this? We have no public comments signed up. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of six to two, voting against Councilmember Hall, Councilmember Schuler.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
That was final, wasn't it?
No. No, the last one was land use plan, I just said it wrong.
Don't move.
Cause it's hot in here. Bear with us, our power went out earlier, and we think it has impacted the air conditioning, so thank you for being here with us. Okay, uh, motion to adopt on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of six to two, voting against Councilmember Schuler, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Item twenty-nine, ordinance twenty-one, twenty-two dash twelve, upon second and final reading, rezoning property located half-mile south of Tecumseh Road on the east side of Twelfth Avenue Northwest, Trailwoods West Edition from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to PUD Planned Unit Development District. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. Is there a representative of, Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be quick with the temperature rising in here, but this is pretty simple. It, it was kind of frankly amiss the first time around. It's a rezoning of an Ideal Homes neighborhood. It's Trailwoods, gonna be section twelve of that neighborhood. Zach Roach with Ideal Homes is here as well. This is really kind of a formality. The final plat for this neighborhood was already voted on and approved by City Council in two thousand and twenty, but it was caught after all the public improvements were put in, and it's actually laid out to the Trailwoods PUD, but the property was currently at time-zoned R1. So the goal here is to just bring it into compliance with the rest of the neighborhood, and I think this slide sells it best. Currently, you see it's R1, but we're gonna rezone it to PUD like the rest of the Ideal Homes neighborhood. And this is an aerial, this is the site that we're talking about here. You can see, this is an older picture, but if you had an updated picture, you'd see the street and roadway is already in and finished, and it's just gonna be more, forty-two more lots for this neighborhood. This is what it'll look like when it's finally developed. There's the forty-two lots, and I'll be quick, Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval, but I'm happy to take any questions, not trying to rush through it.
Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Holman?
I'll let Councilmember Peacock go first.
I really just went, curious if you could speak to the stormwater on this project. I mean, it looks like there's detention in the other phases, is that adequate for this as well?
There is, yes, that, that was something that was looked at during the plating process as well, and, and as I mentioned, it went all the way through final plat, and so that, that was addressed adequately. Zach Roach is here, and he has a really good speech, I don't know if you wanna hear the whole thing, about Ideal Homes and, and how, frankly, how great they are at stormwater and, and detention. And so I'd just like to throw that out there, that they really are kind of a, a front-runner in that field.
I acknowledge that, I think you're spot on, so if Mr. Roach would like to come up here and sing those praises, I'd be happy to hear them.
Sorry, Zach.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Zach Roach, thirteen-twenty North Porter. No, this is, Trailwoods Edition is an addition that, that features several green development practices, not the least of which is a rain garden that we've had extensive use. I think several of the councilmembers here, several staff have toured that. We've brought people in from all over the United States to visit that, that feature in this, this neighborhood. And so this is an, this is an add-on, and like Gunnar said, this is a whoops, quite frankly. And so we are just having this be an extension of some of the already great green practices, stormwater practices that are already there. The other thing I would also mention is just directly north of this, you know, we partnered with the University of Oklahoma, Dr. Rutts Duttonell, to conduct a, you know, an alluvial morphologist to conduct a straightening, or a adding back of the bends of the Riparian Corridor to help increase several different areas, to increase natural growth of trees, to, and, and add wildlife back. And we've also added extensive butterfly pollinator gardens. I think we're the first developer in this region of the country to register pollinator gardens, which you can see extensively throughout Trailwoods. So all of those elements are gonna be present in this neighborhood, and have absolutely have access for, for residents who are using this, these facilities.
Thank you very much for saying that, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I do remember this, this neighborhood, the first section, and the, really the selling point of it to me was the real innovative, at least for here, approach to stormwater management and doing something unlike any other suburban neighborhood we've seen developed in Norman has done, so. And I think it was one of the, the other selling point, I think, was mentioned, was the, bringing the front porches back to a lot of those houses. So for a long time, more suburban neighborhoods, they got rid of the front porches and put everything in the backyard, and this neighborhood was one of the first new neighborhoods to come forward and say, we're gonna bring the front porch back, and we're gonna do all these things about stormwater that we're not seeing done in other developments like this. So I do remember this, just to clarify, and maybe it's not the right term, but is this what you might refer to as the last section of this neighborhood? And faces twelfth here, so it looks like it's the last connection to twelfth for it, and?
Yeah, I, I'm sad to say it is, this is the very last section, the twelfth section, I wish we had more, quite frankly, but this will wrap up that, that development, so it's good memory.
And is this development paying a fee, a, for the future widening of Twelfth Avenue? Or are you doing it yourself?
CD, it's a deferred road CD that we put up with the city, yes.
Great, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schuler?
Yeah, so I was, when I was reading over, I understand that this is the last section, and this is similar to what all of the other sections, but just so that I might understand a little bit better, I, there were some things, and to my understanding, this is why it's a, a PUD and not just regular R1. But some of the variances are the smaller lots and setbacks. Can you just describe how that's different than what's R1, just for my understanding?
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right, it, it's basically those two items, it's smaller lots and, and setbacks. Again, Zach might be the perfect guy to talk about this, but they've really perfected, you know, some smaller designs, and so they've got, you know, templates and, and plans that they'd like to go implement. And so these PUDs are really structured to their product line.
Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, the, still Zach Roach, thirteen-twenty North Porter. The, one of the things that we use, utilize our smaller lots for is actually adding the green space. So we referred to, you know, the, the, the rain gardens that we've used, we referred to the natural miles of walking trails, connection to pollinator gardens. And so when council gives us the flexibility to have the smaller lots, what we do is we pour that back into the common area. And so what we have is this, is you look at the overall area, you have a comprehensive knit walking trail system, you have a green belt system, you have something that encourages pedestrian access. We try and keep, we try and make parks and amenities within a quarter of a mile so that we can encourage people not to drive, we, you know, reduce traffic accidents, we help decrease pollution. So it's a, it's a comprehensive mesh system, and the beginning of the genesis of that is that smaller lot that allows us to be able to do all those things and have that flexibility.
Awesome. Thanks for that clarification, cause I think that some people, when we talk about stormwater and we think about a smaller lot, we're trying to fit more houses, it's more concrete, it's more runoff. And so what you're saying is that it's actually not the case, you're trying to actually do the, the proper thing by creating more green space, by putting it back into the common areas, to actually mitigate all of those things on the other side of that.
Absolutely, and you can see that if you go out there, anywhere you go, it's extensive green space. There's a number of benefits, and I won't, I know it's hot tonight, but not the least of which is helping to, with that, the water restoration, being able to run that stormwater over areas that have got, you know, cattails in those Riparian corridors that allow for water filtration, that ultimately dumps into Lake Thunderbird. So it really starts at the five-thousand-square-foot lot, which doesn't seem like that big a deal, but it allows for all those mechanisms to take place.
Thank you for being creative.
Seeing no other questions from council and no public comments signed up, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Well, I will simply say that I live in the neighborhood next to it, and we go on walks and admire the rain gardens, and there's lots of Pokemon in the neighborhood as well, as my children will report. So, uh, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item thirty, ordinance twenty-one, twenty-two dash thirteen, upon second and final reading, amending the planned unit development established in ordinance oh-six, oh-seven dash nine to amend the site development plan and update the area regulations for property generally located one-fourth mile west of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Southeast and one-quarter mile north of East Lindsey Street. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
There he is, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Sean Reeger, representing the applicant in this case. If I can get us to, let's move him here. There we go, okay. So we are in Sienna Springs tonight on this one, on East Lindsey. And the impetus of this one is the preliminary plat previously had expired. As you may be aware or remember, preliminary plats have, have a certainty of life. Zoning does not, but plats do. Preliminary plats have a certainty of life, five years, you can extend them for some situations under certain parameters. This one expired, though. So we are back to reinstate the preliminary plat for phases two and three of Sienna Springs. Phase one is built, and so that was the impetus. When we came back, though, staff had noticed that there were some things missing from the PUD, the existing PUD, and I'll show you, basically, so we went ahead and did a rezoning at the request, I think, or agreement with staff, more or less, the urging of staff, so that we updated the PUD to include a couple of, of changes to it. So I'll take you through those, and, and I'll show you the change in the site plan. So when we reinstated the preliminary plat tonight, our, our site plan has slightly changed. So let me take you through that. The location of the subject tract, again, is just north of the Sienna Springs, uh, section one, north of Lindsey Street, a little bit west of Thirty-Sixth Street Southeast, and just south of Summit Lakes. The preliminary plat was originally approved in two thousand and six, so this goes pretty far back, about fifteen years. And then again, it expired, the first section got built, and the, the preliminary plat expired. There, you see the aerial of it, you actually see they did build the water line and fire hydrants, is what those little red crosses are, right through the development, let me get back there. So it actually already has the fire line, the water line and fire hydrants, and you can kinda see the street was already more or less cleared and, and put into place, but not built, of course. So the proposal tonight is to go ahead and reinstate the preliminary plat and to slightly modify the PUD. The preliminary plat before you tonight is eighty-one lots, that's basically no different than what was proposed previously, but the site has changed slightly, and I'll show you the change side by side here in a moment. Minimum of eighty-two hundred square foot per lot, that is large. Our, our one allows for six thousand square foot lots, so eighty-two hundred square feet is considered pretty large lots compared to your typical R1. That's the preliminary plat, the lot and block configuration. The open space is not different than previously, so it's left as it was. You see a little sidewalk imagery right there, which is a crushed paver system, a crushed, crushed rock system under, over fabric, that will be the sidewalk that lines around the back of these homes and around the, the lake. And so the summary of it, to see what has changed, the street layout changed, and I'll show you the, the side-by-side difference. Otherwise, the PUD is the same essentially, except for basically the site plan and two things. The rear yard setback, it was realized that the PUD originally had no setback for the rear yard. There was nothing put in the PUD. That's typically, you have all the setbacks defined, this one didn't. So we put in twenty feet or twenty percent. We were looking at this, actually, I don't think the twenty percent will ever apply, cause all of these lots are over a hundred feet deep. So I think it will always be twenty feet, but the engineer had put in twenty percent, but the lot layout is a hundred-foot depths at least. And the other thing, one of the big things that staff wanted us to update was the impervious. This, going back in two thousand and six, did not have an impervious percentage tied to it, and so we put in sixty-five percent impervious maximum, the same as R1. That is the only changes in the PUD to reinstate from two thousand and six. And the lot sizes, again, are the same, eighty, eighty-one lots, eighty-two hundred square feet. And also, no, no changes to the covenants. This particular development had a, a robust covenant with it. And covenants, it's a good point in time to, to remind you that covenants are a private contract situation between property owners, not governmental. Zoning is governmental, very different, and a lot of times people get those confused. But there is no changes to covenants at all, and, and you wouldn't normally be involved in that, but this one does not have any changes. So side by side, that is what was approved in two thousand and six on the left, and on the right is what you're being asked approved tonight. So it's exactly the same across the top, exactly minus just a couple minor little sidewalk areas. But the big change is down in this lower area, the street connections to the west addition are the same. You see one here, and then one on the left over here, and then you see a connection down here. The big change is in this area where it used to have lots facing west into the adjacent property, now they all face inward. So we have one large loop street instead of a center street with three cul-de-sacs. That's the change for the site plan. And with that change, then that requires a change in the PUD to, to revise the PUD to allow for a new site plan. The, uh, let me go back, here we go. One other question came up, this, this particular plan has basically filtration swales in it. Unique device for stormwater, this had it in originally, proposed, and you see it on the left, they're circled in red. And on the right is where it will be now. There was a question basically from the POA and some others, are we still proposing the same filtration swales? And yes, we are. They're slightly different, you could see various slight changes in the location, but they are still there and still part of that plan. So no change in that substantively. The staff reports on this are all clean, we had amendments, the site plan are consistent with the original proposal for the subject property. Public infrastructure is sufficient for this proposal. The existing and amended PUD contain measures to ensure the development is environmentally sensitive, and this one is robust in that regard. And I remember the night it got approved, back in two thousand and six, there was a lengthy debate about it, and so significant provisions were put in this PUD and the covenants to deal with that. Traffic capacity exceeds the demand, and this developer will pay an impact fee for traffic impact to help with the signalization of a, of an intersection. So I would say, and I appreciate Councilmember Hall's comments earlier as to what's in the record, I apologize that we didn't know that either, and so I, I don't have, there was a protest originally, but we believe it was withdrawn, I don't know if it was officially withdrawn, but what happened at Planning Commission, if you watched that, they called out a person to speak who had come to speak, it was the POA representative, was our understanding, who had been working with the engineer, Mark Grubbs. And what happened at that meeting that night is they talked through it, he was concerned about the covenants, he was concerned about changes of the PUD, we showed him how none of that was being changed, and he seemed very satisfied. After Planning Commission, we sent him a letter to detail all of that, to say exactly what you just saw. The only changes are the sixty-five percent impervious, the setback, the setback. The only changes are the 65 percent impervious, the setback, the setback and the site plan. He responded in an email to us, this was in late September, that he was satisfied, he appreciated it very much, and with that, he was satisfied and didn't have any further protests. So, and he did not speak that night at Plan Commission. So we're not aware of any protests that's still situated. Again, I don't know if he formally withdrew it, because I don't see that in the record either, but we're not aware of any contention at this point at all. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, thank you. Our information didn't show what the plat was originally. So that was one of my questions, and I appreciate you sharing that.
Yeah, that right there.
Because I couldn't recall, and a few months ago, a family friend that lives in Sienna Springs, I think his house is the last one that's currently at the end of the street, he had reached out to meet with me about this and share some of his concerns. And he had shown me, I think, this original one with all the cul-de-sacs on it. He was concerned that the houses were smaller than what was being built, and maybe it would be out of character, something along those lines. He was concerned about traffic, of course, being at the end of a dead end, isn't having any traffic down there now, so that was a concern of his. But really, my question had been about the original preliminary plat and how this new one was different, because the one that you're showing tonight, I don't think is the one that he and I were looking at.
Ah, okay.
As far as what he thought the proposed... He might have thought the proposed changes were what was already approved, and was not a big fan, I think.
Yeah.
So that... So I appreciate, again, that you shared the original one. And then the... And so the size of the lots, they're relatively similar to what's been built in Sienna Springs already, or slightly smaller?
Relatively similar. They're the same as in the PUD required, so I didn't ask for the dimensions of the existing, but I believe they're pretty similar. You can see on the left, or you can see on the right, actually, what is built, if you can kind of see those lot lines right there, and then you see the sizes of lots as it carries up around the loop street. So I think relatively, we are similar, yes.
Okay. And the northern connection is to Summit Lakes. I could see that.
Kingswood Drive.
Kind of Summit Lakes-ish. They kind of all converge to two different neighborhoods.
Yeah, let me go back up to the bigger... That's probably the biggest... Oh, that one. I guess this one's probably the biggest area we have. So yeah, so it connects, it doesn't show you it there, but that street right there, if you can see my pointer, is the connector. And then that goes on up into Summit Lakes and over into these streets right here. Let me show you the aerial right there. Those green lines are sewer lines, and this is city GIS. So it connects up, you can go north into Summit Lakes, or you can go west and get all the way over to 24th Avenue Southeast if you need to.
And that southern connection, where would that... I know that there's nothing there currently.
Correct. There's nothing there currently, but it would be anticipated that this street would come down and connect at some point.
And then it would connect, okay, okay. And then you mentioned there's same number of lots.
Correct.
And same number of swells, as you mentioned.
Correct.
And... Oops, let me show... Yeah. Okay. Well, those are the questions I had. Those are the concerns that the resident had presented to me about this, so that's all I got right now. Thanks, Sean.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
So I'd like to follow up on your comment, because this actually may be just a typo or just mischaracterized in the minutes. So I appreciate you bringing up the protest and possibly having it withdrawn, but this literally says that protests were received on this item, which represented 20.9 percent of the notification area. I mean, that's significant, and again, we don't have a protest map, we don't have any letters included. It may truly be because you addressed it and those were withdrawn, but we really have no way of knowing that, so I appreciate you addressing that. And I also just want to add that I really appreciate you adding the PUD PowerPoint presentation to be included in our documents so that we can take a look at that. So that's extremely helpful, and I appreciate you sending that in.
Thank you, Councilmember. And now, just so you'll know, the email that took place was from a gentleman named Mike Avi, and it was on Thursday, September 30, 8:01 PM, and he basically says, "I reviewed the letter," and the letter was from our office describing this, basically, what the changes were. It's very much appreciated your thorough explanation, and statements are concise, and reflect the verbal agreement we were able to reach prior to the Planning Board meeting, he means Planning Commission. I'm very happy, and will present to our members on Thursday, 10/7/2001. This will be their information and maintained in our records. So it seems very positive. I guess it doesn't actually say withdrawal of the protest, but we have not heard from this gentleman yet.
No, I understand what you're saying. Do you think he could represent, one person could represent 20.9 percent of the notification area? I mean, this may just literally be a mistake.
I don't know.
Okay.
He could represent common area.
Okay.
If there's ways POA can represent common area, if they go through the procedures correctly of a vote.
Because I was just trying to get a sense of what that actually represented, so thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuler?
Yeah, I had similar questions to Councilmember Holman. So I really appreciated first seeing the side-by-side and how the two have changed. And my other concern was also about that, the lower, I think the south connecting street, that stump street, Florence. And I think on the first one, you can kind of see how it's coming down, but I think on that aerial view, you can see that there looks to be like a detention or retention pond. So those aren't going anywhere, to your knowledge, are they? Like, it would just be a street that comes down to connect, but no more development or housing?
I don't know, because we're not in control of that.
Right.
So it is not unusual, and I don't want to speak up for Mr. O'Leary, but it's not unusual for developers to be asked to put in stump streets to have connectivity. And Green Belt Commission often asks for connectivity, and so does staff, so I don't know what the plans are for the adjacent property at all, but the connectivity was provided to have it there. And it was there previously, so I think it was somewhat of a leftover from previously. If I can show you that, they had proposed connectivity down here. We now have a loop street, so I don't know if that's really necessary anymore, but previously it was. As you can see, it was basically a dead end of this linear street coming down. So they've left it in, but not sure of the plans to the west.
Yeah, so in the event that that connecting street doesn't come down and it's built as a stump street, what is going to happen with it? Because I know we've had problems in other developments where stump streets then are kind of a road to nowhere, and they wash out, and especially having a detention pond, I can potentially see. So I don't know, maybe this is for Mr. O'Leary, but like, what do we do with that? Because this is where they're asking us to plat as this, but how do we move forward?
I appreciate that, Councilmember Schuler. Again, Mr. Rieger kind of said it well, this was sort of foreseen in 2006, so we were even guessing more than. And that's a lot of what we do, and developers work with us really well, to try to guess what that next development is going to do. And interestingly enough, here we are, 15 years later in that development, that portion of Summit Lakes has yet to develop. And so now, the way we see this working is if you approve this revised preliminary plat tonight with these connections, and we're recommending that you do that, that the burden now falls to that next property owner to make that road connection happen. That's exactly what we would expect that developer to do, whether that is part of Summit Lakes or some other owner-developer. We will want them and really insist that they redesign or design their plat to connect to this road. It's a public safety issue, it is a traffic distribution issue, it's a connectivity of neighborhood issue. It's very important to the development process, and so it's sort of the first one in gets to kind of set the stamp down, and that's what they're doing here, redoing here, and the next one will have to make that happen.
Sure. So I understand if, you know, as you're saying, 2006, we're now in 2021, it's 15 years down the line, we don't know what's potentially going to happen. Who is responsible for maintaining the area around that stump street? Is that the city of Norman? Is that the POA? Is that the developer?
Great question. These are public streets, I believe. We're proposing public streets in Sienna Springs addition. So once, again, if you were to approve the preliminary plat this evening, the next step is a developer will invest probably millions of dollars into building these streets and utilities and storm sewer systems and so on. At the end of that process, they will file a final plat with you. You'll see this again, at least one final plat, maybe two. And at that point, the city will take ownership of that street to the end, right here, to the red line on the right, and the city will be responsible for maintenance of that street and the cul-de-sacs and so on and so forth. Where the street ends and goes west, that is private land owned by a private landowner, and they're responsible for the maintenance of that space.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foreman?
Mr. O'Leary? I have two questions for you. Just out of curiosity, how much does it cost to install traffic lights?
Typical traffic signal, we're doing one in Summit Lakes right now on Alameda, it's about $280,000.
Okay.
In that range.
Okay. That's interesting. Okay. And then my other question is, if the Summit Lakes Dam fails, will this addition flood?
God forbid if that happens, Councilmember, but no, the Summit Lakes Dam, the one that we have been working with, that subdivision for a decade or more to repair, discharges to the north. This is to the south.
I just had a person ask, and I just wanted that on record. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, there are no public comments for this item. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? All right. Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast. The ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
We have a break requested, but item 31 is a companion item, so let's get that done real quick. Preliminary plat for Sienna Springs addition, Section 2, generally located approximately quarter-mile west of 36th Avenue Southeast and a quarter-mile north of East Lindsey Street. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, and there is no public comment, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Items left tonight, so let's take... Oh, wait, wait, wait. Well, sort of, two, companion items and a third item. Let's resume at 9 o'clock. Yeah, I need to go cool off or...
Let's go sit in the ice machine for a while.
Okay.
Take your jacket off. Yeah, when the power goes off, they have to reboot all.
I feel like from Jurassic Park... All right, let's go ahead and resume. City manager will join us shortly. Item 32, ordinance 2122-14 upon second and final reading. An ordinance rezoning property located east of Reed Avenue and approximately 717 feet south of East Main Street from planned unit development district to simple planned unit development district. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant to make Mr. Rieger?
Mayor, appreciate Sean Rieger representing the applicant in this case. And this one's exciting for me because I remember distinctly being here about five years ago when we did this one, and it was a pretty raucous affair, if you recall that, Mr. Holman. It was police officers in the corner of this room, and it was a pretty wild night. I remember that. And I'm happy to say we're back here tonight, and this is what the room looks like. And I think it's a testament to Food and Shelter for why that is such a different experience tonight. So I will take you through this. Again, it's exciting for us to be here to show you the progress and success of Food and Shelter in this particular development that was begun quite a few years ago. But first, let me just say, the mission of Food and Shelter is simple. We feed people who are hungry and help those living homeless make their way back home. It was founded in 1983, quite some time ago. Think about the lineage of that. That is a long time ago. 1983, founded, began distributing meals to hungry people out in community parks. And by 1987, they opened their original location at 104 West Comanche. If you recall that location, it was just south of Neighborhood Jam, right on the James Garner area. OU Architect's School helped with some housing there, and it really became a successful mission in that location. And then it found its new day in 2017. Actually, 2015 is when we were here rezoning, and to the great help of folks like the McCowen family and others. They came up with a pretty unique concept, a neighborhood village of tiny homes. And we came through with that that night. Extensive debate and robust concerns were all had, and it got built. And what we're here tonight for is the second phase, which was always anticipated on land they have always owned since this original one. But it is a change of path. Instead of doing more tiny homes and an additional village, this one would be a food and resource center. I'm going to take you through the mechanics of the zoning, as I usually do, but then the best advocate is sitting right behind me, Ms. April Hyple, who will come up and talk about the vision and what is anticipated operationally for this project. So the mechanics of the zoning, in front of you is a location map. This is the location just south of the existing PUD. It is a PUD, south on Reed Avenue, just south of East Main Street. Here's an aerial looking at it. And I think this aerial tells you sort of the story as why they're there. You can see the existing facility just north of it. This is an old aerial. This is City of Norman map. But right there is what was called East Main Place. It was an old building, became very dilapidated. It was removed. But it was there, right near this location, and essentially was homeless services and things of that nature, and various different capacities. So it was taken down. Food and Shelter was put just below it. A sidewalk was built from Main Street to come down to Food and Shelter. But in the same area, of course, is Griffin Memorial, one of the longest standing organizations in our community. And just to the upper north of our... To the right of that is Community Services Building. To the lower right is the County Health Department Building that got relocated here in recent years as well. And to the west of this is another one that we rezoned that we were very excited to do is CCFI, who founded a home in an old church that had been abandoned, basically. And then the Boys and Girls Club joined up with CCSI. So in this immediate area, we have a number of services that are very compatible in relating to the services of Food and Shelter. So it fits very well. That's a closer-in view of the site. Again, they own this site. They have since the original development. That's the tiny home village. And then this is the site right here, about 1.07 acres. The zone... I'm sorry, each time I click this, it goes twice. I've got to figure that out. But so this is the existing 2025. There's no change. 2025 is institutional, and of course, this will continue to be institutional. The zoning, again, is existing as a PUD. The difference is that this is still a PUD. We're just amending the PUD to now allow for a different site plan and add uses of a food and resource center, which was not in the original PUD. So the original PUD, of course, in 2015, we proposed it, we approved it, and then the building got built. The existing facility provides transitional residential cottages. It has the administrative office. It has cafeteria, laundry, warming shelter if emergencies needed. And then this amendment seeks to add to the south the Food and Resource Center on the property, again, just to the south of it. That's the site plan that's proposed tonight. You can see it's just south of the existing villages that are on the south edge of the original development. It is one building and a parking lot. Let me take you through it a little more detailed here. So this is one building, 8,800 square foot building, 28 parking spaces. I think it's important to note that this is now a commercial building. It's the commercial lighting ordinance that we've talked about before will apply. That requires full cutoff fixtures, shoebox fixtures we talked about, and a photometric plan when they go in. So we will be sensitive from lighting to the neighborhood. This will also have a fencing along the boundary on the north, so that we actually protect cottages. Our own clients and persons that we serve to the north will be protected from this development. So all public improvements, the staff report is pretty clean. All public improvements, including street paving, drainage, sanitary, seater water, fire hydrants, all of that is already installed. Important to note, the sidewalk that was put in originally, which was a pretty big deal, actually, there was no sidewalk coming down from Main Street. That was a long way to go. And it was put in originally. That will be continued on down to this development. So that will be installed as well. So the green space exhibit is 40% pervious area. That is, of course, better than an R1, 65% impervious. So green space. There is actually a large green space on the right side, which is the stormwater facility. And then we see pretty good green space next to the building as well. Actually, let me go back to this. It was talked about at Plan Commission, but this is a one-way entry only on the south. So this will be trucks, delivery trucks and such that will come in on the south, and then dumpsters up here that would be picked up and then carried on out here. That is the vision. I'm sorry, this clicks twice. But this is the preliminary floor plan, very preliminary. Of course, floor plans, we don't usually show you because they're not really a zoning issue on a floor plan. But I thought this was helpful for you to see kind of what is envisioned inside this building. It basically is trying to provide a grocery store feel so that we are not doing it a different way, I will say, that maybe gives some dignity and some help to people to walk into a grocery store, just like you and I do. And they can go in and pick their groceries, some fresh vegetables and fruits, and hopefully improve their health. And I'm sorry if I'm sweating here right now.
[laughter]
But I'm going to wipe my face so I can get the sweat off. I'm sorry. But yes, everybody's fanning themselves. So it's a venue for clients and resources to help families become economically secure. This is the original... This is the vision right now, beautiful building, again, in keeping with the architecture of the existing village right next to it. And you see the site plan just to the left right. So support. There is a protest on this one, as you mentioned, Councilmember. And I think this one, actually, in the packet, does show those protests. So you had the opportunity to read those. There are basically a couple of homes on Reed Avenue just along the side. And I know there's been discussions about the homes on Reed Avenue, so I won't enter into that discussion here. But I do want you to see the support. Also in your packet is enormous community support. Every single ward is represented on those pages, and many times over, about 200 signatures there roughly in support of this project. And again, I think it's a testament to why this room is relatively empty tonight as compared to six years ago when it was not, I can assure you. So really, a testament to the organization of Food and Shelter and what they have done here and the success they have had. So in summary, the Plan Commission unanimous support, and really, I would say glowing praise of this project and the services they provide. Green Belt Commission provided no additional comments. The staff on the preliminary plat recommends approval for the revised preliminary plat. Now with that, you don't really need to hear from me. I want you to hear from Ms. April Hyple, the executive director of Food and Shelter, who will talk you through the vision and the operational aspects of this, so.
Thanks, Sean.
You bet.
Like you said, my name is April Hyple, and I have the honor of representing Food and Shelter, an organization that has served this community for almost 40 years. My very favorite thing about Food and Shelter is its origin story. And its origin story is very Norman. A group of people, women at McFarland United Methodist Church, saw a need outside their church. Moms pulling food out of the trash can. Kids couldn't enroll in school. And instead of just pity, they said, "Put me in. Let me figure out how to be part of the solution." And they came together to figure out what would be the first iteration of Food for Friends. And then they brought in other church groups and brought in other civic groups and joined up with the City of Norman and made Food and Shelter for Friends a truly community-led effort. And through all the iterations of what we do, Food and Shelter, the building, the board, the staff, we may be the vehicle, but truly, it is our community that has guided us forward. Every time a need has been seen, we've risen to the occasion to provide housing for more people. And this project is really no different. A need came to us, and we said, "Tell us how to solve that need." And I want to just kind of bring up that a couple of weeks ago, you guys received a presentation from Home Base in which they identified a need in this community, several, one of which is this community needs more robust, more coordinated, more effective homelessness prevention strategies. This project right here is a giant leap in that direction, a giant leap. And let me explain. When the pandemic started, Food and Shelter lost all of our volunteers. And so I and the staff had to stand in and do all the work. And so I found myself doing food pantry work almost every day. And standing in that line, meeting the thousands of people who had never come to our food pantry before, who had never been to any food pantry before because they just didn't know they qualified, they thought it was for really poor people, not just sort of poor people. And talking with them, I learned about their circumstances. And one thing I found out that echoed throughout every single person I met, that in this community, thousands of families are looking at the money they have in their wallet and looking at their rent that's due, and looking at their utilities, and looking at their kid that needs shoes, and looking at a very empty food pantry, a very empty fridge, and having to make a decision. And there are some things we can live without today, like rent. We can get through not paying our rent today and still be okay tomorrow. But we can't really live without food. And so a decision gets made, and people choose between paying their rent and buying food. And every dollar that they do that with leads to housing instability. And that begins to snowball and grow. And eventually, families find themselves homeless. And so giving them an opportunity where they can come into a free grocery store and buy their own... And pick out their own food without having to pay a dollar just means they can put that money toward rent or utilities or kids' shoes, if that's what they need to do. So it is truly a mechanism to reduce and prevent homelessness in this community. And that's something I think we all agree upon needs to happen. But the other thing it does is it allows us a vehicle to assess their holistic needs and provide for their holistic needs. Because we can all probably come to the assumption that if somebody walks in the door and says, "I can't feed my family. Like, my fridge is empty. We have no food at home," that's probably not their only need. They probably have housing needs, additional community resource needs. So this center, not only will it have on one side the free grocery store, but on the other side, the resource center. We're resources in this community that are already available. We're not creating anything new. We're just providing the vehicle so people can come in and share those services in a much more effective, easy-to-access method. Services like veteran services, we have those on our partner list, services like OKDHS, Social Security Administration, services that are incredibly important for people living in poverty and trying to get out of poverty. And so the efficacy of this kind of model is not new to us. We didn't create it. We just found a model championed by the Regional Food Bank and said, "That seems logical. Let's do something like that." And so when we came to you guys in 2015 with a plan, our original plan was to build housing here. And we were expanding our current services, dining room service, housing services. We were not a food pantry. We, at that point, had no intention of being one. And I'm not here to tell you we don't need housing because we definitely still need housing. But the CEO of the Regional Food Bank at the time, Katie Fitzgerald, visited me right before we opened our new facility, and she gave me some jarring information. She said that Norman, particularly Norman, but Cleveland County and our greater area, was underperforming in hunger relief. And based on economic data, statistics, census, all of that, what we know about this county, this community, the number of people we know are living paycheck to paycheck, making that choice between rent and food far outweighed those that were showing up to pantries. And so she said, "We need another access point in Norman. Would you all open up as a food pantry?" And we didn't design our building to do that. But I know a lot of you, I know you are like me, that if somebody says to you, "There are kids hungry in this community," we're going to say, "Put me in. Put me in. Let me be part of the solution." And so that's what we did. We edited our operation plan, and we opened a food pantry up that started off slow, but day by day by day, the numbers grew and grew and grew. Because we're open six days... We were, at the time, open six days a week. The only pantry opened on the weekend, so working parents actually had an opportunity to access food resources. And the numbers just grew. And in 2018 was the first conversation, "Okay, we need a pantry." But then we gathered with our community, and we saw this vision, and we realized this is just more... A more effective model. I believe in it to my core. I've worked in this community for 12 years. I've worked in this industry for 25. This is a model that works because it makes accessing resources, caring for your family, getting out of poverty, just a little bit easier. And if we can make it just a little bit easier, I don't know why we wouldn't. So as we've been building up this plan, we've brought in lots of partners, and it's going to be a really amazing location to serve families here. I want to talk about what it is and what it's not. It is a place for people who live in Cleveland County who are housed to come in and access services. They are... They have to come in and provide documentation to show where they live so that they're housed, so they can take home food and access the housing resources and the different benefits that are on the other side. Doesn't mean Food and Shelter is going to stop feeding people who are homeless because we have that location already built. But this is dedicated to housed people. It's not a homeless shelter. It's not going to bring in outside people from outside communities because they would just have to... They would be turned away. They couldn't... They would have to provide proof they live in our community. And I think that's really important because a number of the protests that we received were related to that kind of a concept. We were going to be bringing in more people who are homeless. And as I was planning this also, the first thing I did, the very first thing I did after talking to Councilmember Lee Hall, was send out letters to all of our neighbors to the west. So we don't really have neighbors on the other side. We have partners to the south. So all of our neighbors to the west for about a three-block radius. And I invited them to come and talk to me, come and ask me questions. Let me explain what we're going to do. Let me hear your concerns. And I met with some over the phone, some in my office, and I had two group meetings in our conference room. And overwhelmingly, everybody left saying, "I have no problems with this project. This seems like an awesome idea for Norman." The only concerns that were ever raised were about our already existing services. And we talked through a lot of solutions for that as well. And we talked through a lot of solutions for that as well. But we did our due diligence. We talked to our neighbors. We adapted our site plan for the neighbors multiple occasions when they gave ideas. Think that you were in that meeting where they brought that up and we immediately changed. And every one of those changes are reflected in this final design we're presenting here. Every step of the way, as we've asked our community to come with us, people have said, put me in. I think it would be really important for the city of Norman to be a part of that as well. So thank you so much and I'll stay to answer questions when you get to them.
Well, don't go too far. Are we ready for questions?
We are.
All right. Ms. Hyple, I have a question for you. So I'm actually on the Community Engagement Committee for the Moore Food and Resource Center because I recognize it is such an amazing concept. It's pride in the process and it makes it easier to not only get help that they need, but access the case management type resources you're speaking of. But that one is under the Regional Food Bank. Will this be separate?
Right. This will be operated as a food and shelter program.
Well, it's still get food from?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll still, we are already a partner. When we said, yes, we'll open as a pantry, we became a partner of Regional Food Bank. So that's where we get a good portion of our pantry food. That our access will actually change in a positive way once we enter into Food and Resource Center model, so.
Okay. And then one of, one of the reasons why I was involved with the Moore Food and Resource Center is not only is it a great model, it serves all of our zip codes. But it's called the Moore Food and Resource Center. So I was thrilled to hear that we're going to have one in Norman. But it sounds like if someone from Moore, as long as they're in Cleveland County, they could still use this resource as well.
Absolutely. And I'm glad you brought that up because we've met with Skylar, who runs that program several times. And the number, the percentage of Norman people that drive to Moore to shop at that location is, is ridiculous. It's close to 25 to 30% every single month. So I mean, that says something. It's because the personal choice option is available. I mean, that really makes a huge difference to people. We've been looking at our underserved populations and here in, at Food and Shelter for the last couple of years. And the, one of our largest is the Latina population. And when I went to them and we did some surveys and we said, why aren't you going to food pantries? The number one reason is we don't need that kind of food. We don't need the food you get in a food box. And that really plays, you know, we talk about that a lot. I have a very picky kid. My kid wouldn't eat any of that stuff either. But a lot of people don't eat that kind of food. And the McFarland folks we work with fairly regularly tell us all the time, they have to go out to their parking lot and in the trash to pull food out of that. That people have just said, I'm not going to eat that. This is a reduction of food waste. It gives people that personal empower, but it also serves really two great purposes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Mr. Rieger.
Yes.
I just want to run through some of the details of the Spud. And I'm incorporating in some of my questions, just a lot of the feedback that I've gotten from constituents in Ward Four and specifically addressing some of the concerns with the neighbors across the street. So for anybody listening at home that has an interest in how this is actually going to be developed, I think this will be helpful. So I'm literally moving through the document, your Spud document. So we're going to just go right in order. So 2C on drainage. Can you address just the stormwater plan? It's my understanding you have existing detention? And there's also going to be a detention pond on this new phase.
Well, and I'm going to ask Chris Anderson with SMC Engineering, who is helping Food and Shelter on this one, to talk through the civil engineer.
Good evening, Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers. Yes, Councilmember, you are correct. There is an existing detention pond that was actually constructed for the entire site, not just on the first phase. So the area that's shown on the, on the east side there in green, that's actually an existing detention pond also in addition to the area up there, kind of to the northeast.
So there's two.
Yes, that's correct.
And then this is right on the border of a flood plain.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then some of the questions that have come up are just the issue of flooding. And what I can't tell is if any of this is flooding that neighbors experience on the city street or in their yards to the west, does that have anything to do with the drainage from Food and Shelter? Or if that's just a subject of, this is a very flat part of Norman.
Yeah, I don't think so. Most, again, most of this site drains back to the, to the east, to these detention ponds. And if you've been out there along that street, you realize that on the west side, the, there is no curb on the street there. And I think probably sometime in the past, there was probably a, a barge ditch or something there. But over time, it's, it's kind of filled in. So like you said, those front yards are pretty flat. So I think that's just conditions that they've, they've experienced all along.
Because if I understand the stormwater plan correctly, it's, it would discharge into Bishop Creek, right?
Correct, back, back to the east.
So that's going to the east, not to the west?
Correct.
So you are controlling that on your property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
Real quick, Councilmember, I would just show you, there is the flood plain that Mr. Anderson was talking about. If you see on the right side, the light blue is flood plain, the dark blue is floodway.
Okay. And then moving on to 2F under traffic and circulation. One of the things that I was really glad to see that you highlighted, and I just wanted to make sure we put a, put a pin in that about the ingress and egress, because I think one of the suggestions from the planning commissioners was to have ingress only on the portion, the driveway for the sanitation truck. And I'm assuming delivery trucks would be able to enter there too.
Correct. And you see it on the bottom of the screen now. We've added the, the red area of this that you've seen right there.
Well, I think that literally addressed one of the concerns from the neighborhood about the, you know, obviously sanitation truck is big, but that's something that's up and down that street anyway. And you've accommodated an in and out for that sanitation truck. And then one of the other concerns raised was just the delivery trucks. So being a partner with the Regional Food Bank or just the kind of delivery that would be made, I think one of the concerns with that these trucks would just be parked along the street. And that's, I don't think that's going to happen either. They're going to have the ability to enter in, unload, and then circle back out. I'm not sure who that's a question for.
Firehouse for that. You know yet from the food bank?
Okay.
So you're, you're correct. So the deliveries will come in in that one-way street, park north and south behind the building, unload from the semi and then, and then exit back out on the other side. And just to clarify, those semi trucks come twice a month. So they're, they're, it's not an everyday, four times a week kind of thing. Every one of our other deliveries are at the biggest size like a Ford Transit.
Yeah. That is actually my next question because, you know, information is power and understanding that these types of deliveries will be limited and not coming in and out every single day, I think will also reassure, reassure the neighbors. Let's see, anything else on that? So one of the, one of the other concerns of the neighborhood was just the traffic on Reed Avenue, which is a, you know, an old city street. And this, this also may be a staff question. So I don't know if we've ever considered traffic calming or if it was even appropriate for Reed Avenue. Or if that's, I mean, has that been anything that you've ever thought about or? Yeah.
Would be more of a staff question.
I personally don't even know what that means.
Okay.
But I, I'll tell you, the main concern is parking. Is the parking.
Not speeding.
The traffic kind of, probably it's 100% more than before we got there.
Yeah.
But the biggest concerns I get are the cars parked there and that'll be addressed with all the additional parking spaces.
Cause you do have additional.
I don't know what traffic calming.
Yeah. So. So I don't know if this has ever been requested or.
I don't have our traffic engineers with me tonight, but I'll check in the morning. Again, traffic calming is a neighborhood-driven process. We get calls frequently. We respond to everyone. We would, we'd be happy to do that here, whether it was the Food and Shelter folks or the neighbors. Again, traffic calming in our city, in our program really is speed-driven mostly. It's not volume of cars. This is a pretty low-volume street even with the expansion here. But it's usually desired by neighbors because they are frustrated with speeding, which usually translates to 33 miles per hour or greater. The majority of cars there. I, I don't think, based on my observations, that's happening here to that level. But we would be happy to work with the neighborhood to do that.
And that's really my point, that any neighborhood, including this one, has the option, if they feel that this is a concern, to request that Public Works evaluate whether any traffic calming methods would be available.
You bet. And if I may, Chris did a great, had a great answer about the street condition and the stormwater. I want to reiterate that, that this is an old asphalt street. We call it the rural standard, no curb and gutter. And at one time, many years ago, it had roadside ditches and channels. Not uncommon for neighbors to fill those in. And they wonder why the stormwater doesn't work. Well, it has nowhere to go. So this is exactly the kind of street that we have put into our street maintenance bond program to reconstruct and bring it to current standards. I'll check on that in the morning. I don't think this one is in the current program, but it could be in a future program to upgrade not only the street condition, the pavement, but also the stormwater system.
So again, in response to concerns of the immediate neighbors, as a city, we have options to address some of these concerns because they're actually not really the purview of the applicant to address.
Exactly right.
They just happen to be on that street.
Especially in fully developed areas like this. This, this, this one falls to the city to take.
So while I have you, the next issue would be lighting. And from my understanding, commercial lighting is applied to the current phase. Commercial lighting will be installed in the next phase that meets standards. And wait a second, Mr. O'Leary. So again, this is, again, this is coming from neighborhood concerns. So I think this is a great opportunity to put some of these things to rest. So I think one of the issues with the neighborhood, again, it's not specific to your application or to how your property is going to be developed. But, you know, they've described inadequate lighting contributing to some of the issues that they're having with the increased traffic that is, you know, just expected with a facility like this. And so again, what would the options be for the neighborhood to address what alleys that they feel are not safe? And street lighting, maybe that would be something that we could take a look at with the surrounding area? Just what would the options?
Sure, you bet. Again, the applicant in this case, or the landowners, would do their own private lighting and the city then manages the street lighting system. If memory serves, after the planning commission meeting on this item, we heard that concern. We went to work directly with OG&E and I think additional streetlights have already been installed.
Perfect.
If I remember right, it was in the, the alley connections north of the current Food and Shelter site. Maybe a couple of extra streetlights and OG&E was happy to install those for us and we're happy to pay for that monthly fee.
And that's, you know, one of the beauties of working through a process like this and having the opportunity for the neighbors to weigh in at the pre-development meeting. And in this case, Ms. Hyple went the extra mile and reached out to the neighbors directly across the street. And so these are the things that have come up that we have the ability to address as we go. So I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, on to parking. So how many spaces are there going to be?
28 additional.
And there's, I noticed that there were several handicap spaces.
Correct. We show three there. And typical standard for ADA is you typically have about one or two to 50. I think once you get 50, you have to have more.
And I'm assuming that, are there going to be any restrictions on the parking or who can park there because of, to alleviate some of the on-street parking?
I'm going to defer to April.
Okay.
So I'm planning kind of the operations of this. We are going to, the overlap between what happens in the 201 Reed location and what's going to happen in this new location is going to be very minimal. So there shouldn't be any crossover, say if volunteers were to park down here. And, you know, there shouldn't be any crossover between those two groups of people. So I don't know if you're saying like.
Well, I just am hoping that this will alleviate some, again, some of the concerns of the neighbors that on this narrow street, there's parking on both sides. And that, you know, it seems like those, that number of spaces would be able to accommodate some of that overflow that's on the street.
Right. I, I, I think all of those cars are generally coming to Food and Shelter. They're either volunteers serving in the kitchen or they're pantry guests in the afternoon. And both of those folks would be allowed to use that parking lot. And it would, I think it will greatly eliminate the street parking, yes.
Okay. And then at one point in our conversation, you had talked about the possibility of maybe being able to do a community garden. Is that still something that's on, on the list?
Yeah. So the, the green space that's to the east, I know we can't build anything on it, but there's lots of spaces to put gardens out there. And that's going to be one of our goals is to, to work on community gardens. I want to recognize Kristi Blair, who's here with me. Kristi Blair will be the director of the, the Share Center once it's open. And so she'll be charged with a lot of that kind of stuff. But, but yeah, definitely we're interested in that for sure.
And then to follow up a little bit on just the qualifications for being able to have access to the food pantry. So it's residents of Cleveland County and they have to provide some kind of documentation that they are housed in Cleveland County?
We, the standard is a piece of mail. Most people bring a utility bill. But the standard is a piece of mail that shows their address here in Norman or Cleveland County.
So do you think that, just based on your experience of living in this neighborhood for all these years now, are you expecting that some of the neighbors within the surrounding area will be qual, be able to qualify to use the food pantry as well?
They already do. I mean, there's probably 30 neighborhoods, 30 households in the neighborhood that are very regular guests at our pantry or our dining room and bar.
And I really appreciated you taking the time to talk about the difference between the current population that you serve and that you are expanding the population that you will be served. And part of the end goal is to use this as a tool to keep people housed and reduce homelessness.
Right, absolutely. When we looked at the impact we could have with this facility on homelessness versus when the housing that would have been there, you know, our impact to prevent homelessness is going to be a lot greater.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm done.
Hi, April. Come on up. So this project, you know, I'm devout Catholic, right? And so this really speaks to me. You did it for the least of us. You did it for me, right? So that's just on a personal note. But I do think it's very important to, for us to permit a project like this to help the insecurities of the residents of our community. I think that's one of the most important things we can do as a governing body. Councilmember Hall asked all the pertinent questions. So my question for people who are listening, what are the hours and the days of operation going to be for this?
So I can't, nothing I say can be set in stone because we're really, you know, one of the things Kristi is doing is visiting all the other pantries and looking to see how are the other food and resource centers and see how they work. But currently we operate Tuesday through Saturday in the afternoons, 1 to 3:30. I can envision expanding several of those days to be in the after-work hours, like early evening hours. So that again, our goal is to allow working people to have access to food benefits.
Okay, thank you. And then I was just going to say, Mr. Rieger, you said 1983 was a long time ago, but I was born in 1983 and that hurt my feelings. I'm just, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
I think I win. I'm the oldest person here.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. The lighting on the street was definitely one of the issues. I don't know if this particular project is responsible for that. But based on what I can tell, there is only one street light on Reed Avenue. It's at the corner of Eufaula and Reed, just a bit south of this property. So that's definitely a project I think we need to be looking into is getting some city street lighting along there in some form.
Let me add to that too, Councilmember, just, I would just encourage you, because in the pre-development meeting, it was also talked about the alleys. Were a big issue of lighting and so not just on the street. So if you will, keep that in mind. We'd appreciate that, that if those alleys could get some lighting.
Well, it sounds like we're already addressing that.
And you mentioned, Sean, that in this area, there have been services in this area for a very long time, correct?
Correct.
Just in this general area, there's always been.
Absolutely, yes.
Similar types of what I would call human services, I guess.
For a long time, Councilmember.
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schuler.
Perfect. Most of my questions have been addressed, but we got an opportunity to tour the Moore facility. I mean, I don't know what time is, but a month or two ago. And it's really impressive and we were really excited that a project like this was coming forward for Norman and for our residents. But one of the things that I noticed at their facility was kind of parking and the way that they're utilizing because of the pandemic. And we don't know how long that that's going to go on. They're using a system where people don't come in to concrete into that kind of waiting space. And so they have to stay out in the parking lot. And so it seems like it fills up their parking lot and people are waiting to kind of take a ticket. Do you anticipate that? are waiting to kind of take a ticket. Do you anticipate that that's going to spill out onto the street? Are you going to use a similar process to what they're currently using? I don't potentially think that it's going to go on once we resume to kind of like the normal times, but who knows what that's going to look like. Maybe you can address that.
So, so yeah, so all of us had to adapt the way we do food pantries for the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, we allowed people to come in and shop for their own food in our facility. Afterwards, we did boxes out the door, and it does create definitely a, you know, a backlog when you do that. The reason we kind of even started with this whole loop, because before, at our first plan, there was, it just cut off that, that south entrance was just a back, go in and back out down Eufala. But the reason we put the loop in was because we visited the, our Daily Bread and Stillwater, and they do this similarly, but it's just, it's a loop. And so it moves much quicker, and I think it would work much quicker. You know, we haven't gotten so much into the details of how it's going to operate, so I can't answer your question fully, but that we did kind of address that in the way we observed all the different ones doing their pandemic-style operations. And we adjusted to kind of hope to meet that need.
So you foresee kind of that drive area potentially being kind of a spillover for allowing people to park while they're just, you know, waiting to take their ticket and kind of move along? If you're going to need to stack kind of people where they're, they're waiting to maybe enter the facility for, you know, their services and then to shop and stuff like that. Because I know that parking and, you know, on the street, and we're talking about traffic calming and some different things, and since that's probably a concern of the neighborhood.
I'm just, I don't know if this thing has the cursor there still. So when we visited our Daily Bread, and I came back and sat with our food program coordinator, Sunny, and some of the architects, we looked at something like where they don't get out of their cars, they don't park, they come in this southbound, and sorry, this mouse is not good, goes, goes in here, they come in here, they stay in this kind of area, and their car pulls up here, and we load their boxes in their car, and then they just exit back out. So they don't have to park, they don't get out of the way. I don't know how many cars that could facilitate at one time. I don't foresee it being, I foresee it being enough space. So it's, it's hard to say with that tiny picture.
Yeah, that just seems like a slightly different model than what they're doing
It's different. It's definitely different than what they're doing at Moore, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions from council. I believe we do have some public comment.
Michael Ridgway.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Michael Ridgway, 3910-180th Avenue Northeast. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of Food and Shelter. I don't really have any factual stuff to add to what's already been said. I think that Sean and April have both done a remarkable job of presenting the plan and the project. I'm going to speak very briefly from my heart. I'm a lawyer, and so that's unnatural. But I once, I once litigated against an organization that claimed that its, its foundation belief was Galatians, Chapter 6, verse 2, which says, "Carry each other's burdens, and in this way you fulfill the law of Christ." And I was skeptical of that organization's belief. I was skeptical of their, of their integrity. And I litigated against this organization. What I came away with from that litigation was I couldn't get that phrase out of my head. Carry each other's burdens, and in this way you fulfill the law of Christ. And I found that it became my personal theme. It became something that I think about all the time. It became something that drives what I do. It became what got me interested and involved in food and shelter. Food and Shelter works to empower people who are in need of hope, homes, hope, homes, and food. I think it does a remarkable job. I think that April's a miracle worker. We lift people up out of homelessness. We give them housing first. We feed them. We get them on their feet. And in many cases, we get them back out being productive citizens. It's a moving, moving organization to be involved in. On behalf of the Board of Food and Shelter, on behalf of myself, I'd like to ask for your support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now is an opportunity for council for to make final comments. Councilmember Holman.
You say me or Hall?
Holman.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I really appreciate this project being brought forward. I was on the council in 2015 when we approved the first part of this. And I remember envisioning more homes at the time and being excited about that as well. But things do change. Different areas need support. And I think this is a good adaptation to what we are currently seeing in our community, as has been mentioned. I know part of the goal, or one of the things mentioned back in 2015 when I voted for this, or one of the compelling things for it, was knowing the demographics of this neighborhood that it's in, and that this facility, Food and Shelter for Friends, the current one that's been built, and I suspect the, if this is approved, this will do the same thing, but that it helps serve this specific neighborhood to a significant extent. This neighborhood is one of the lowest-income neighborhoods in Norman, if not the most, or if not the lowest. There are a lot of families in this neighborhood that are housed but are living on the edge, just as April mentioned, that they have enough to keep a roof over their head, but they don't have enough for those shoes. They don't have enough to keep the pantry and the refrigerator full and the utilities on. So the fact that these services have been able to benefit this particular neighborhood, and also recognizing that there have been some issues as well that we need to continue to be aware of and address as we go forward, as we've talked about tonight. But this particular area has served what I would refer to as human services since the founding of this city, with Griffin Hospital in the area. And even today, you have Central Oklahoma Community Mental Health Center, Health Department, the Oklahoma Juvenile Center for Girls, the Children's Recovery Center, Dimensions, and formerly Leland Wolf School, CCFI, the former East Main Place. All of those services are in this direct area and have been for many, many years, showing that this particular issue of homelessness and food insecurity and those types of things have been issues in our community for a very long time, no matter who the mayor is, who the city councils are, who any of those people are. Those issues exist and have existed regardless of those factors. And so for me, I believe food and shelter are human rights that should be guaranteed. So that's my personal opinion about that. And I'm going to support this tonight, and I look forward to getting this built and getting it serving not just Norman, but all of Cleveland County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
So I think I'm going to start in response to Mr. Ridgway. I am really stunned to have you go on the record that lawyers have hearts. So, great to know. I think I'm going to start with just the long, long list of support letters from members across our community. And as Mr. Rieger pointed out, there are many, many names that represent every single ward in our community. And I want to recognize the very important role that Food and Shelter plays in our community, and the passion that Ms. Hyple, her board, her staff, her volunteers bring to addressing homelessness in Norman, and now tackling food insecurity in Norman in a centralized way. And that this broad support has been there for Phase 1. It continues to be there for this phase, and recognizes, I think, the significant contributions made in having the support of the community when it was a dream, and now that it's a reality, and now you have a new dream, and you have a support for that, too. But because I represent Ward 4, and because I represent everyone who lives in Ward 4, it's important for me to point out that none of that support is coming from the neighbors across the street. And I think Ms. Hyple, more than anybody else, recognizes the daily impact that the current facility has on that neighborhood. I believe she has done her due diligence in trying to address those concerns in short-term and long-term ways. I really appreciated the fact that she didn't just rely on the notification process that basically is delivered to property owners, so renters may not have any idea of what's coming in their neighborhood. And she took the initiative and the extra time to reach out to the people who actually live in the neighborhood. And she, you know, addressed the fact that she took in-person calls. She had two meetings. One, I had the privilege of attending. And I was, when you see this process in action, it works, because there was a neighbor that lives right across the street. She's been a homeowner since 1996. And she was supportive of the mission. There was no question about that. But she also wanted to be heard about how the mission impacts her. And she was the one that requested that it would really help the neighborhood if the Food and Shelter Board and all of the architects working on the project, it would really help the neighborhood if you could change the entrance to the building from facing Reed to simply making it face north and having an interior entrance to the facility. And April didn't bat an eye and said, "We can take care of that. I feel confident we can take care of that." So this is how this works. You know, neighbors have to be heard. And what we do and the decisions we make impact the people that live right across the street. And so for any neighbors that are listening tonight, I've talked to many of you, you've attended pre-development meetings, you've gone to the planning commission, you've talked to Ms. Hyple. We hear you. We all hear you. Ms. Hyple hears you. The City of Norman hears you. You heard tonight that we are trying to address the things that aren't even anything that she can address, but that the city can. So we can talk about improving lighting. We can talk about adding streets, their street if needed, to, you know, maintenance and improvement down the road. So I want to make sure that the neighbors across the street understand, we all hear you. We are all listening, and we're doing our due diligence to address the concerns that you have. So once again, I appreciate the sensitivity that Ms. Hyple has, and she is a neighbor. She's there every day, and she wants to be a good neighbor, too. So to address the food bank in Moore, it was mentioned, and I just want to reiterate, that, you know, when this all came about, this was recognized as an area that we are not up to speed in, in Norman, in addressing food insecurity. And we have, I want to acknowledge the many, many food pantries that we have in, primarily located in our faith-based institutions, our churches and other faith-based groups. We also have community pantries that are outside, located all over Norman. So we have a lot of caring people that are trying to address food insecurity, but it's not enough. And the need, I think, has been demonstrated for a centralized food pantry in Norman. I also had the opportunity to go tour, and you're exactly spot on. I mean, they have already identified in data-driven ways that they are supporting a lot of folks in Norman, and that the time has come to, you know, bring that back home and take care of the people who live here. And that we're literally underperforming in our need to access food in Norman. So again, I really appreciate Ms. Hyple and the board recognizing the need to adapt from their original plan of providing more housing to adapt to the current needs in our community. And I believe that there's also future plans to continue to add to the cottages. But first things first, so we know that a centralized location won't fill every need, and Food and Shelter has recognized the need for these other food pantries that I referred to to exist. So I think with her leadership and having somebody on board that can communicate and collaborate with our other faith-based access to pantries that will only get more efficient and be able to provide more help. So finally, I just want to say, as the only council member assigned to the City Council ad hoc committee to address homelessness, I'm acutely aware of the important role our community partners play in reducing homelessness, including food and shelter. Food and Shelter is expanding their mission to fill a critical identified need and a gap in service in Norman. They are not alone. There are several nonprofits that are currently working on master's plans, expanded services, and capital projects to address the needs of the most vulnerable in our community. The saying, "It takes a village," resonates so strongly with me because it takes all of us to work together to support these public-private partnerships to address the critical needs in our community. And I'm happy to provide my support for this project.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn.
I have no doubt that the compassion for this project comes from a genuine place, but there also should be compassion for those citizens that have lived there maybe decades and now feel like prisoners in their own neighborhood because of the residual effects of what Food and Shelter has brought. The crime, the violence, the drugs, the theft, the trashing of the properties. I can't, in good conscience, go forward with expanding that footprint to these poor people. That, they have no recourse. They cannot even sell their houses now. It's so bad that the city recognizes that, and we've had discussions of buying the houses from these people that have to live by Food and Shelter. And that is a reality. Why, I understand the mission, and I applaud the effort of the place that it comes from. You have to look at the effects, and one it does to someplace, it should have never been located there in the first place. It had no business meaning there. To affect the lives of all those property owners, all those other citizens of Norman, while the mission is of great cause, it has all these negative effects that my colleague here just addressed. But there's no quick fix to that. And to expand this into the lives of these folks that live by there and make it, I know it might not be the same as bringing in more homeless, but there's going to be more traffic, there's going to be all kinds of burdens that these people are going to carry even further from their neighborhood. And what about the compassion for them is what I say. Where's their compassion to allow this to happen and to continue to grow and future expansion? I just don't, where it's at. Unless you're just going to buy up all the property from all the surrounding area and use that, it's just going to keep expanding. If you use that for more housing for those that are unhoused, it's just going to creep into the next neighborhood, the next neighborhood, the next street. It's just not the ideal location.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
I just wanted to resound my support for this project. April, Kristy, thank you for all that you do, Michael, and the board for what you do. I think that there is no perfect place for this, but there's no perfect time for them to be hungry. There's, I don't understand why there would be any contention towards this. I understand property owners have concerns. And I think that April and the board are very sensitive to those needs, and they try to accommodate the residents and the neighbors' surrounding areas as much as they can. But I think compassion comes first, and so I fully support this project.
Thank you. And as I've already said, working with the Moore Food and Resource Center, I couldn't be happier to see this be put into Norman, because I've seen firsthand what it does to people that need help. So thank you for your efforts on this. And councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes by a vote of seven to one, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been, adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes by a vote of seven to one, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. Item 33 is a companion item, a preliminary plat for Food and Shelter Phase 2 addition. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
So moved.
This is a companion. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any registered speakers seeing none? Any final comments from council? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes by a vote of seven to one, voting against Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you. Onto our final item of the night, item 34, ordinance 2122. Oh, what, you don't want to stay? Or Article 12 of Chapter 22 zoning ordinance to establish and further define additional standards for small cell applications. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Heather Poole, Assistant City Attorney, to make a presentation.
As you can see, we have a PowerPoint, but most of you have already seen this at the study session. I know we have representatives from AT&amp;T, as well as the weather coming in and the weather in the chamber. So I will just quickly move through the slides. If there are any you want me to revisit, I will be glad to go back. Again, as we mentioned at the study session, the federal government really has made it very limited in terms of what municipalities can do. The concerns or the ability that the city can do is to manage its public right-of-way, to ensure the placement, construction, and modification of those wireless facilities. We cannot limit them being placed on OG&E light poles. We can't require a lot of documentation from the entities that are applying, and we can't prohibit the provision of wireless services. We did have some, and we do have a state bill that we are trying to, a state statute that we're trying to stay in conformance with, with our city ordinance. We have staff here as well to answer questions in regards to the permitting and the experience that we've had specifically with one vendor, which was AT&amp;T, though there are other providers as well as AT&amp;T that are providing the small cell or 5G service. The amendments that we have imposed, you'll see in red the changes to what our current ordinance is right now. We have included information from vendors to explain why colocation will not work and they need to install a new pole. We would add, well, and then these are the fees for an application. There is, you'll note, there's a very short clock for staff to review these applications, and that's pursuant to federal law. That leads to kind of the staff's concern that on the front end, we address a lot of questions from vendors, so we're not having to do that on the back end when reviewing their application. Some of the issues that the city, that staff feels the city should consider is some of the applications that we received were adding a pole to an area that already had about 19 or so poles in the neighborhood, and it would end up being a third pole in front of a residence. Or we had situations where there were already multiple existing streetlights, and yet they were going to add another one. Another situation was along Main Street in front of Sprouts, where we already had multiple poles, and they were requesting to add yet another one there. So there were situations like that where staff had concerns about how these would be applied. What we did was we looked at the OML proposed language, Bixby Specific Ordinance, where they had a colocation and how to try to reach a compromise with the providers making these applications, as well as reviewing ordinances from these other cities. The changes that we have asked to make in the clause within seven, I would ask sort of a housekeeping amendment to change the language to make it consistent with the state statute that where it says in subsection 6C7, within half a mile radius, to have that wording read within a 500-foot radius. AT&amp;T did send us a email where they requested that the Section 7 read, "An applicant shall not apply to install a new wireless support structure unless it is determined after diligent investigation that it cannot meet its service objectives by co-locating on an existing utility pole or other wireless support structure within a 200-foot radius and rights-of-way on which, one, the applicant has the right to co-locate subject to reasonable terms and conditions, and, two, the colocation would not, A, impose technical limitations, B, exceed the structural capacity of the existing utility pole or wireless support structure, C, cause interference with existing telecommunications equipment at the site, or D, impose significant additional costs. The applicant shall certify it as made a determination in good faith based on the assessment of a licensed engineer and shall provide a written summary of the basis for that determination and its application for a new wireless support structure." City staff feels like we made those accommodations within our new revised seven, Section 7, except that we did not require an engineer certification. We simply required that the person submitting the written documentation provide an affidavit affirming that the small cell facility planned for the proposed wireless support structure cannot be accommodated on an existing or approved utility pole for those following reasons. Also, the city staff is not, is not willing to modify it to 200 feet versus 500 feet. And that's why we asked, and again, the state statute Title 11, Section 36-503, when it talks about limitations for authority of small wireless facilities under E1, it talks about a new or modified utility pole installed in the right-of-way shall not exceed the greater of 10 feet in height above the tallest existing utility pole in place, has at the effective date of this act located within 500 feet of the new pole. So based on that wording, the City of Norman staff feels that the 500-feet restriction within the different poles is more reasonable than the 200 feet. And if you have any questions, again, we have an AT&amp;T representative available, as well as the staff that would handle the permits.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. So with this, my biggest concern really has been the issue you mentioned about multiple poles being in someone's front yard. This particular residence on College Avenue has two already. There's another one that's actually in between the property next to them, so there could potentially be four utility poles within a short frontage on a residential property over there. So that was my biggest concern, is trying to avoid that. Do you feel this, it seems like it with 500 feet, this would sufficiently address that situation?
Well, and that's part of why we took the language that AT&amp;T provided. And again, they're not the only provider, but they are the only ones that submitted or requested edits to us. We took what they had asked us to put to explain why they could not co-locate within our ordinance, in the intent that that would mean colocation could occur more frequently than requesting to install a new pole. That was the hope.
Okay. Thank you. And I would like to have the representative from AT&amp;T maybe come up. I mean, I've sat through multiple meetings about this, and I think most of us on council have, but I'm imagining a lot of folks watching at home, or even some of the audience, might not know what you're wanting to do, why, what is this? Maybe you could give a little short overview.
Absolutely, and thank you. Jason Constable for AT&amp;T. A little bit of background here, we did work together with the Oklahoma Municipal League and with cities to pass Senate Bill 1388, create kind of a unified framework. We were sensitive to, we wanted the cities to have a voice and to have a set of rules. We wanted them to be able to care for aesthetics and certain design parameters and have a lot of say in how small cells are placed. But at the same time, we wanted to have one single set of rules that we could then take across the state. So I think the partnership went very, very well, and the Senate Bill 1388 passed, I think it was Hallmark legislation. And as a result, we've deployed small cells throughout Oklahoma, a great number of them in many, many cities. Norman is the one left on my radar where we have not yet brought small cells and the 5G technology towards, and we're hoping to remedy that today. The issue boils down to poles, as you've heard, so I'm in agreement there. And we're certainly very, very sensitive as well to the number of poles and what we can do to reduce the number of poles that we place. To that end, we proposed the language that City Attorney Heather read, and I think that that language is really good. The issues that we have with the language that the city has brought forth is, I think it was taken from Bixby's macro cell tower language. So let me explain that. So macro tower is the big, large, giant cell towers that you see. You can see them from miles away, and they're tall, and they have miles and miles of range. If you read the language, that's what it talks about, within a half-mile radius, you know, if you have a tower within a half-mile. It also talks about lease agreements for land. Those macro cell towers, they require a lot of land, and you could actually move a macro cell tower about a half-mile or so, you know, and still get the general topography. Small cells, you can't do that because the radius is only 1,500 feet. We also just place them in the right-of-way, just as we do other utility structures, so we don't, you know, pay any type of rent or any type of lease on those. And another classic example is talking about heights of 50 feet or higher. Small cells usually top at about 30, 33 feet. A really, really tall one might reach 40. So we wouldn't be looking to put these at a 50-foot level. So I think us, where we're at with the cities, I think we're in agreement on language, or at least a concept by which we can place our small cells, and we can say, hey, look, we agree, we'll take a look around, and if there's an existing pole or wireless support structure that meets our needs, we will use it. But it has to be a valid option. It can't be any type of a structure, any type of a pole. We'll provide the documentation. We'll careful of those issues. But the city's language has a lot of the same kinds of issues and concerns, and I think our language kind of addresses that concern that the city has in a much better
What, in your words, or in the company, what, what is this technology address? What is it going to improve or help us do by having this?
Thank you. So one of the things that was kind of highlighted by the pandemic as students and individuals work from home and learn from home is the need for additional broadband capacity. They had internet service at home, but when, and it was sufficient in the evenings, when people were checking Facebook or a couple other things. But when everyone needed to learn off of it, when everyone needed to work remotely from it, it just simply wasn't sufficient. So these really are critical for our ability to get that additional broadband capacity out there. So heavy users, the people that are really using a lot of bandwidth and needs, these small cells really address that, and they're really, really good at soaking up that bandwidth. And then they're saving the macro cell tower network from being able to do its job as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
So you have to work with other companies because we do have existing poles. It's not like we have a shortage of poles. OG&E has done a good job of making sure we're wired up as well. So what is your working relationship with OG&E to make sure we can have as few new poles put in our community as possible? Because obviously, we do care about the aesthetics of our community.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. We have a fantastic working relationship with OG&E. If possible, and we can go on an existing OG&E pole, that is very much our preferred option. One, it gets us in the ground quicker, and, two, it's a lot cheaper of an option for us as well. So during the course of the time, Norman was one of the very first where we filed our applications for small cells, and we filed 78. Only four of those, I believe, were approved. I know Councilmember Hall nodding her head, she was there when we talked about this. Since that time, our relationship with OG&E has gotten even better, and they've allowed us to place on certain utility poles that they previously would not. So our intention here is to withdraw the current applications that we have from the city. And if we're able to reach agreement on this language, then we would file new permits, roughly 26 or so. So many of those would already be cared for, being able to go on utility poles.
So it's my understanding that staff is asking us to amend it from the half-mile radius to the 500 feet. Do you have a concern with 500 feet?
I do have a concern with 500 feet. The small cell radius really is only 1,500 feet. It's kind of their maximum operating condition, and that's kind of in ideal topography and without any type of blockage or anything along those lines as well. So when we deploy them to, we deploy them similar to like a Christmas tree-type arrangement. So when we're really trying to address like a capacity need, it's typically an entire area or entire neighborhood, and so you might need multiple small cells. If you have to take one of those small cells and you have to move it 500 feet, then you're going to have to reconfigure the entire rest of the node cluster. And in doing so, then you might not be able to use poles that you would otherwise have wanted to use, and have lots of other types of issues. So anytime you have one pole that you couldn't get, you have to take the entire cluster back and re-engineer it.
Well, if you only have four out, redoing a cluster over doesn't seem too much of a burden.
We haven't built those four. What we'll do is, once we've gotten kind of a critical mass of applications kind of approved, then we'll go forward and we'll build those.
And so the 200 feet that I believe you are favoring has resulted in that random pole. Is that correct? Or, and look at Mr. O'Leary or Ms. Poole, that picture that...
Right. I think the, when they were applying for those permits, it was the 500 feet. Because in our own ordinance, the, under 6D, it referenced 500 feet apart. So that had been what we had had in our ordinance, and that is what is in the proposed OML ordinance. So when they submitted their first applications, it was within the 500 feet. So those four worked. And then the other 72 applications were not denied, but the city had requested additional information from AT&amp;T, and it just kind of, they just kind of lay there. We haven't received additional information.
So college towns, you know, we probably have a lot more bandwidth going around at certain times of the year. What does Stillwater do?
That I would not know.
Yeah. We haven't, we haven't gone to Stillwater yet, so just not quite on our radar. We've been kind of focusing a lot on the metro and the surrounding areas, the Tulsa and Oklahoma City metro areas.
And what do Tulsa and Oklahoma City do?
They do not have a spacing requirement for us, and so we've deployed, you know, hundreds of small cells throughout Oklahoma City and the Tulsa metro areas, and really had no issues whatsoever. The city has ordinances in place regarding aesthetics, not to place in front of, you know, not to impede a sidewalk, not to impede traffic or line of sight. There's a litany of ordinance that all apply to small cells. But if you say, well, this is a bad placement for a small cell, you have many, many reasons why that you can reject that. So what we do is we try really, really hard to find, okay, these are the really good spots, these are the places that make really good sense. And then if we run up against, oh, well, there's another, the current ordinance just reads just a pole. So it could even be a bird feeder pole or a flag pole. If there's a pole within 500 feet, then you just can't place within that.
The issue is Norman's a special place compared to Oklahoma City and Tulsa. So I think we need to be very thoughtful about what we put forward. If 500 feet seems too much, and that came from the OML ordinance, is that correct?
The OML has not had a draft ordinance that I have seen and reviewed. We worked with them on the model legislation, Senate Bill 1388, and that is not in the model, and that is not in the legislation.
So they're not providing guidance on what these should look like, these types?
As far as in the state law, no, they have not. And if they've come up with an ordinance, then I have not seen that, and I'm not aware of that. But in the discussions that we worked on together with the state law, it is not in the state law.
Okay. Well, OML focuses on cities, so if they have a city one, I'd like to hear about that.
I would just have you refer to Title 11, Section 36503E, where it says, "Each new or modified utility pole installed in the right-of-way, this is under limitations for authority of small wireless facilities, and not 10 feet in height above the tallest existing utility pole in places of the effective date of this act located within 500 feet of the new pole on the same right-of-way."
Counsel, any other questions? All right. There's something to remember, the public to speak? Do we have anyone? Any more to add with your three minutes?
If I can sweeten the pot, I'll go to 300 feet.
Okay. Well, okay. Any final comments from counsel regarding this item? Councilmember Holman.
I mean, I'd be interested to know why five hundred feet is in the section mentioned by our staff. I mean, what reason seems arbitrary, or maybe not?
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. The thinking at the time when it was originally drafted was the small cells have a fifteen hundred foot radius, so five hundred feet was sufficient to give some overlap for the small cells to, to work, but protect from a proliferation of poles. The state law allows every city to adopt spacing standards. As we've been sitting here, I, I know from talking to other cities, five hundred feet is fairly common. Not every city adopted the same thing, though. Stillwater's five hundred feet. Bixby, their ordinance is, is almost verbatim what, what we have, and it is in reference to small cell facilities. So it's not an uncommon thing among cities, but it is true that not every city adopted the same thing. So it was just looking at a way to be reasonable, to allow some overlap, because I knew there was, as the drafter, I knew there was some, they needed some working room, because it's, it is a science in how these get placed, but, but keeping in mind the fifteen hundred foot radius as well, and, and our concerns about too many poles.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
It's based on the staff report and staff recommendation. I'm comfortable with the five hundred feet, and we can certainly revisit it if we can demonstrate that it's been problematic.
Okay. Well, we are going to have to make a motion to amend the current one proposed by staff, and I certainly want to make sure Norman has access to small cell technology as well. So I would recommend, or make a motion to amend, that we amend references to within a one-half mile radius in Section six C seven and its subsections to within a four hundred foot radius to ensure consistency with state law, with the same thing that you had proposed, Councilmember Hall. Should that be an issue, we can always go back to five hundred. Do I have a second? Yes?
You'll also need an amendment if, if we were changing the, the foot radius. Our spacing requirements are also in Section six, let me make sure I get this right, six E four. It references the five hundred foot there as well.
Including six E four.
Right.
And D, D I one.
Yeah, I think we...
How about anything that references the half-mile radius and five hundred feet would be changed to four hundred feet? Will that take care of it?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Mayor Clark, if I may, I think I can live with the four hundred feet, and I appreciate your generosity. I would like to mention, though, if, if the council would approve it, or at least consider it a little further, I would rather have my language than the current, than the current language that, that the city has brought before you, simply because, like I said, it was built for macro cell towers, and so in addition just to the, the half-mile versus four hundred feet issue, you've also got the issue about leasing of land, and you've got the structure and the height, the fifty feet. There's a lot of irregularities with it that really just don't apply to small cells, and it just makes it a very peculiar ordinance. I think that the language that we've crafted does the exact same thing.
Has everyone on council had a chance to see the language that they have crafted? Okay, so that...
I haven't.
I just got it today. Do we need to make a motion to postpone? Yeah, we're, it's getting a little messy. I'm tempted to make a motion to postpone to our next council meeting, just so everyone can see what you are proposing, because you make a very valid point that if we're talking about two different kinds of poles, might as well clean it up. Okay.
I have, I have a copy here, if, if it, if it helps. Yeah.
Doesn't help.
Okay. Yep, all right. If I don't make a motion to postpone, I have feeling someone on this die as well, so I will make a motion to postpone to a date certain of November ninth, I believe.
Second.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to postpone this item to a date certain of Tuesday, November ninth. And Councilmembers, or, yeah, or do you have any questions regarding the motion to postpone? Any public comment regarding the motion to postpone? Any final comments? Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. And I want to thank you all for sticking around for this late, but I want to make sure that we consider this issue thoroughly, and if we haven't seen what you are recommending, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to review that, and we'll put you at the top of the agenda next time. Okay.
All votes have been cast, and the motion postponed passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now on to miscellaneous comments. Do we have any signed up?
And we have one.
I'm sweating.
Jackson. Could you state your last name, too? I couldn't read it.
I can spell it as well. Oh, it's part of my time? Okay. Jackson F O O T E. And where are the cameras? So it's hard to tell in my, my first meeting who works for the city and who doesn't, but I'm pretty sure that the, the chief of police and the police force work for the city since they have the monopoly on violence, and, and I will, will speak to that first, to the, the proposal for Graykey Corp., or whatever it's called. It's a really powerful hacking tool, and the first time that you break into, into devices using that allows every other time that you break into it to, to be automated, so that you don't have to worry your conscience with it when you do it. And tools like that that automate, automate that sort of violation of civil liberties are problematic for that reason, among others. The, the other question, of course, is who's going to watch the, the watchers? And I think it was, it was just last year that, that the police force was, was outed for doxing one of the members of the dais, and under that context, I, I wouldn't imagine why the council would give people on the police force the possibility of using a tool like the one that, that Graykey has developed. And for those who are interested in, in freedom and fans of freedom, I can only point you to the, the balance that Ben Franklin discusses between giving up your freedom for, or your liberty for some safety. He's, of course, the person who said that we're, we're going to hang together, or we're better hanging together than we are if we're, we're hanging separately, or something to that effect. So I wanted to talk a little bit about recent developments with the police. As you all know, the Norman Police spent fifteen million dollars in two thousand eight. The department will spend more than thirty-two million this year. Do you all, or anybody else in Norman, feel safer than you did fifteen years ago? I think it's worth asking that question before the city council dedicates even more money to the force, whose budget has outpaced other city departments two to one in the last decade. This is the reason that I think the council halted spending, or an increase for a request in spending, and asked for an independent audit, which I have not seen yet, and I think was just recommended, be used instead for other purposes. Will this independent audit still happen? Is it something that we're going to be able to see, to ask questions about the last fifteen years when spending has more than doubled? Has Norman become safer since the Norman Police Department has grown by leaps and...
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Thank you, Mr. Foot. Mr. Foot, thank you. I appreciate your time tonight. Okay, Mr. Foot. Mr. Foot, your, your three minutes is up. I appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Foot. No, I'm not. You're going to follow the same rules as everyone else, and it's three minutes. Thank you for coming tonight. No, there were not. Okay. Thank you for your time tonight. You're welcome to come back. Okay, Mr. Foot. Captain, can you please? This meeting is adjourned.